I'd like to go ahead and call our school board meeting to order. We're going to proceed down the agenda that we have before us. First thing we're going to discuss is student achievement preliminary data review. Dr. Boone?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. We have a presentation to go along with this. I don't know. There are two parts to the present. One is the overall presentation of the SOL results. As we know, the state has released both district and state data. And then the second portion deals with the population of the school board's data dashboard as it relates to his accountability plan and how we're navigating that. Doctors Rogers and Bailey will be supporting our presentation. Actually, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them to spearhead. Let me be clear. We have some good news, we have some great news, and we still have as far to go as we've been. Recently, Dr. Marcus Newsom, the new superintendent in Petersburg, addressed how Petersburg will not be a quick fix that is going to take time. And you think about us, we're about three times the size of Petersburg. And so, you know, we're getting there. But again, we still have a lot of heavy lifting to do. So there's good news in this report, and we're excited about the good news and the progress that we're making going forward. But we aren't there yet, so.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, School Board members, Dr. Boone, and members of Cabinet and central office staff. First, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Bailey and her team for compiling the data for us to review because it does take quite a bit to make sure that they have their information correct and as it correlates to the state. So I appreciate her efforts with doing this as well. And as Dr. Boone just shared, we are pleased with the progress that we are making. I just left the meeting with the state where we met with our priority schools and members of the Office of School Improvement to listen to some changes that are coming our way with regards to what the expectations will be. And in part of that presentation, they talked about school improvement being a three- to five-year process. And that being said, when we look at our progress over the last three years, we have seen some great gains. We have lots to celebrate, particularly in, you know, all of our schools. But yet, we still have certainly a lot of room to grow. And as we look at the data, I do want you to keep that in mind, that, you know, we have seen gains, but we do have areas in which we can grow, particularly when we look at our subgroup populations. And the information that will be shared with you today is very high level, and we certainly plan to come to you all during your next meeting with very detailed information with regards to how all of our schools have performed, as well as how all of our subgroups have performed, and better yet, what is our plan moving forward. So, that being said, I'd like to ask Dr. Bailey to share what's on the next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers, and good afternoon, Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan, and members of the board. Certainly, we were glad to see last year come to an end, and now we're into another school year. So now, we're excited again. Certainly, we won't get to that testing time period until the spring of the year, but certainly, we have a lot of information to look at as well as plans, create plans for the school year. Just to recap quickly, we processed or we had over 66,000 students test that we processed as of the end of the school year. That included also our alternate assessments for our students with a disability. New this year, we had computer adaptive testing, which is a different format than your regular multiple choice, primarily in math for grades three, seven, and eight. Grade six started last year. And for this upcoming year, they're going to transition that format to reading. Just a brief summary of how our overall performance for the district looks compared to the last four years. Certainly, the larger green bar was when we had the standards that had been in place for quite some time. Now, we have more rigorous standards, and this is the fourth year, for English, writing, and science. Math is in the fifth year of its standards. So you could see that we showed some progress. We're happy about progress in reading, a little flat in math, but still, overall, looking pretty good. We had a little bit of slippage in history, and we had some growth in science. Our accreditation summary, we felt that it would be important to share this information to you in summarization, looking at the last three years compared to this most recent year, having four years of information. For our school year of 2015-16, based on 14-15, you can see that we had 17 schools that met the requirements for full accreditation. For this most recent year, based on preliminary data, we have 23 schools. And what I have done here is I have included the paired school because the paired schools receive the same accreditation. So say, for instance, Fair Lawn and Poplar Halls are paired. Poplar Halls will receive the same accreditation status as Fair Lawn. So we have three schools that are in that predicament, certainly Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn, PB Young in Tidewater Park, and Willoughby with Ocean View for the first year. We have several schools in which they are in a TBD status to be determined. We have had some applications that we have filled out that have gone to the Department of Ed to review, and we hope for a granting of partially accredited, reconstituted, is how it will read. I have also included colored boxes along with accreditation status. If you recall last year, when we presented this information to you, we also shared individual school status associated with those colored boxes to make it easier to read. And so, we will be prepared to share more details with you in the coming weeks. The timeline, as we move forward from today, the state plans on doing a press release on the final SOL state ratings, as well as the federal ratings. I believe that may include priority and focus status. And then, at the end of September, we will get our final information on our graduation and dropout rates. So that would be not only our graduation completion index, but also our on-time four-year graduation rate. Okay, that concludes this portion, which is very brief. But I want to transition you to the school board. I guess we're calling it maybe Accountability Dashboard. This should be aligned with what we're working on, the accountability plan. That particular document looks like this.
So the state will produce their numbers before we get the numbers, or?
For accreditation?
Well, for all of them. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you were saying. You're saying that there will be a public relations report that will come out. Will we get the information?
The press release.
The press release.
Right. The press release that the state will share with you is the number of schools who have met all the requirements for full accreditation, and then for the partially accredited approaching, partially accredited improving. And so, that is the final status. They are making some changes with the federal AMO as we transition into the ESSA guidelines.
And I guess what I was asking, will we get that information before?
Preliminary.
Just as we did this time, we will provide information to you in advance of the press release.
That's what I meant.
Yes, yes, we'll do that exactly the same way we did this time.
Okay. So, in keeping with the format that we have been discussing related to the accountability plan, the accountability, the purpose of the accountability dashboard is to outline the measures associated with the identified needs. So I'm starting to create the dashboard in this particular type format. And if we could scroll to the next page, please. What we're starting to do is outline by number and goal what information or measure is associated in the dashboard for that particular goal. Certainly, a lot of discussion has been talked about related to our SOL performance, SOL subgroup performance, as well as pass advance, I believe is another area that had been requested. And so, this is just a brief illustration, then, in what we would see in the dashboard. As we move forward, you'll see a lot more numbers and the different gold areas. This next page shares with you our preliminary information, as well as the overall performance by content, which would be English. We did tease out writing, math, history, and science. And then, we have also provided for you the subgroup performance. We are still calculating, we haven't finalized and merged our gifted information against the SOL performance, as well as our military. The additional information that you see in the very last page of this report is our performance by individual grade level and subject for the last three years. So I did calculate a two-year increase/decrease from the school year 2013-14, just to illustrate some level of improvement or decline. And then, eventually, we'll talk about what are going to be our targets for the upcoming years, whether we do that statistically, or if we use the state and federal guidelines. And then, we usually like to identify our source of information. Do we have any questions at this time?
On any of it?
Yes, because it's essentially the same data in both. The dashboard breaks it out, as I said, by content further and by grade level and subgroup. And as Dr. Bailey has indicated, we still would have to do the data collection, data disaggregation for gifted and our military students. On the first page of the dashboard, that's something that we said as a board in its accountability plan wants to monitor. So what the state has provided at this point does not include, they don't collect it for gifted first and foremost, so we have to do that. And then, the military piece, while we have the military student identifier and everything else, the state hasn't provided that at this point. But we will be working toward that so that the board can see in its dashboard related to the accountability plan exactly what that looks like.
And before I go, is there anything else you'd like to speak to as far as this, before we go to questions and discussion?
I do. When we, if we flip back to the PowerPoint presentation and the page that has the accreditation ratings on it, a couple of observations and things that we know that I want to bring to your attention as we've started working on these data. One is, I think the great news is that over half of our schools now, at least half of our schools, have met the state benchmarks as it relates to full accreditation. We also know, which is my ongoing challenge with the state system, which in time hopefully will be improved, is that if you find a school that slips in one area by one percentage point, they are suddenly warned versus something else. And so, this is why I constantly say to the board and say to the public and say to the state superintendent and others that there are only two ratings. You either are or you aren't. And everything in between gives us a false sense of hope. It's designed to celebrate where we are, but why can't you still be an improving school if everything else improved except one percentage point in one content area? So we'll see some of that as we go forward. The other piece that I think is significant here, and as we begin to talk about our individual schools and the state releases those data, and then we can talk about them more, six of the schools, new schools that are accredited, of new accreditation, are schools that were in third-year warrant. So that's exciting news, that six of those schools are in the fully accredited numbers. So when I talk about the great news, six of the schools that were in third-year warrant are now part of this fully accredited window. The other piece, you heard Dr. Bailey mention, and the board is aware that we filed some applications for different status for some schools in anticipation of where they were, based on last year's data, and to get ready for that. It's always, it's an awkward process. You apply for a different status before you know your final data. So we've done that for some schools, and then, when the board meets in September, we will know which of those schools have been granted a continuation of partially accredited schools, and other actions are required. Of course, any school that we applied for that has met full accreditation, they will come off the list and not need anything. And then, some schools may not make it into a preferred status of still improving, but some could become denied. So we're hoping not to have any more denied, but again, that's what we're waiting to see. One school, I do want to, while we're not talking about individual schools, I think it relevant to at least address one of the schools, and that's Camp Estella. As we know, the conversation about Camp Estella's status, let me be clear to the board that as I continue to talk about where we were as it related to what could happen at Camp Estella, whether with choice seats, whether students attended there, would continue to attend there, what it would take to get a different level of diversity, I failed to make it blatantly clear that we weren't going to be eligible for a new school number, thus potentially a restart on its accreditation status. As I indicated to the board earlier this year, we did apply for a new school number. And when you apply for a new school number, there, the application is very specific in that it asks, you know, what are the reasons that we would be changing the school? So you change in the low grades offered in the school and the high grades. So, of course, by adding six through eight, that was what we thought we fell into and would make us eligible. Elementary school changes to a middle school, a combined school becomes one or the other. There's also a change from a center to a program. For example, if we were applying for Academy of International Studies at Rosemont to become a standalone school rather than a center-based program where the scores went back, go back to the home schools. And the third option deals with the low and high grades and the reports on the fall membership from a school to a center program. So if we were taking a school offline and then making it a center program, then that would be another way of doing it. The state's application is very clear that should a school, receipt of a new school number will not necessarily mean that there's a restart or a result in revised accountability ratings for the new school. That's not ever guaranteed through this. It's up to the state. So when we submitted our application, the state contacted us and said they had some questions about our application. And they essentially took us through these questions again. What's different at the school? First question, is it a school replacing an additional, an existing school? Yes, it did. There was a school named Camp Estella on the same site that the new school was being built. What's significantly different about the school? It will now be a K-8 school where it's previously been a K-5 school. It will have a thematic focus in its curriculum, the STEM, and we shared that we were doing Project Lead the Way and all of that. The next question that they ask is, well, of the number of students, has the student population changed? And so, we said, well, it will. It'll have, you know, students six through eight. So we talked about the overall enrollment and additional 300 students. Bottom line is, if the current attending students are not going to change by at least 50%, then it's the same school and therefore not eligible for a, either a new school number and a revised accountability status. You will recall, last year, when the Academy of Discovery at Lakewood opened, they had, what, a conditional? What rating did they get as they opened last fall?
Just conditional new school.
Right, conditional new school. So that was our thinking, that we would be able to accomplish conditional new school. But we had not met the threshold in terms of significant enough change for them to consider it both as a new school and one that would have a reset on its accreditation ratings. So I wanted to be very clear with the, to the board, that when I continued to talk about we couldn't get to certain places, that was what I needed, was intending to say, and never was explicit enough that we had applied and did not receive and had to withdraw because it wasn't going to be successful. We didn't meet the threshold for the federal criteria. This application goes to the federal government to determine if a new school number. So I wanted to share that with the board in full context.
Dr. Robinson?
Looking at the, at the, by grade performance, and I like to look at it on an angle.
In the PowerPoint?
Which one are you?
Not in the PowerPoint, in the, in the summary, the dashboard. Under 1.13 math?
Got it.
I like to look at it on an angle because you see, you go from progression from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So if we look in 2013-14, fifth grade had 62%. Then it jumped up to 71% and then, in sixth grade, and then this year, in seventh grade, it went down to 49%.
Mm-hmm.
I don't expect an answer right at this moment, but what would cause a slippage like that?
Well, first, that is the way that we need to look at it. You know, it's one thing to see the annual changes for different groups of students and the number to see at that angle. So that's where what we know historically in Norfolk is that our middle school performance has been lagging. And so, it begs the question, what are we doing in curriculum alignment between fifth and sixth grade and those middle school years that will result in such a decline? We know, as Dr. Rogers has shared with the board and as we've continued to share with the board, we spent a great deal of last year, as Dr. Rogers started in his position last summer, working on the curriculum alignment. We know very clearly from both state reviews, from our visits of classrooms, we had some true curriculum alignment issues. Things weren't being taught as they should have been taught in terms of alignment with what the sequence is and everything else. And so, when we look at drops like that, that really flags right off the bat what's happening in the alignment. Is there a real, there's almost a disconnect between the sixth grade expectations and the scaffolding of the next grade levels, fifth, sixth, and on.
I would expect to see it more, I would have expected to see that more from the fifth grade to sixth grade, rather than sixth grade to seventh grade, because sixth grade is part of middle school. But let me preface what I was going to say, let me, let me catch up. I'm happy to see some of the positive changes, and I want to applaud the division for the work that they're doing. I just wasn't expecting to be the first one called for a question so far.
Oh. So he told you on that one.
Yes.
I would also like to interject that what you don't see is that sometimes, as our students transition from seven to eight, they may elect to take an end of course, which the option for middle school students are Algebra I and Geometry. And so, that's what you do not see. All of our middle school results for Algebra I, Geometry, Earth Science, Biology, World Geography are blended in with all of the end of course because it's an end of course assessment in which they obtain high school credit for. So that's what you don't see. So as we move forward and we tease out middle school performance, then if we collapse math altogether, you'll see a different picture, in addition to what Dr. Boone said.
Ms. Bassin?
I was going to point out similarly, the cohort trends that Dr. Robinson just pointed out and had a similar question to that drop, also noting that the gains, you know, looking at the gains in the cohorts versus across the grade level and what that might tell us as we plan to, thinking ahead, we're going to dive deeper into this in the future, I know, but as we plan for the upcoming year and what we might need to do to prepare. But some of the other thoughts are more suggestions, trying to align as we also refine our school board accountability plan is also to, we talked about when we went over the indicators a few months ago, to include homeless, the homeless subgroup as one to monitor as well. And we also, I think it'd be good to also stratify by race and gender because I noticed, just going to the VDOE and looking up the school specific, I noticed also big differences between males and females and when it was interested in looking at, you know, the differences between white males versus white females, black males, black females, and to look at it that way as well. And another suggestion is students with disabilities. You know, that's a large group of students, and I think, you know, looking at our top, where we have the biggest subgroups, which is specific learning disabilities, where we have almost 37%, our students with autism at 11%, and other health impairments at almost 18%. I think it'd be good to stratify, you know, to divide that further, the students with disabilities. So if we can look at that to really see how those larger subgroups of students with disabilities are doing and performing, I think that would be important for us as a board to look at also.
Clarity, those are items that we have in our chart, right? Are you saying they need to be added to our chart?
Well, to, I think we need to add that to our chart. So as we refine our board accountability plan, but as a suggestion here, because it's such a big group, and we've talked about that because even in May, when we did do the special education, we had Dr. Boone's overview of where we are with our special education, which was a review of a lot of last year's, where we are now, but last year's data. You know, we had talked about some of those larger subgroups within our students with disabilities. So I think being intentional in our, in our board's accountability plan and also how that reflected in the dashboard would, if we agree to that.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is because this version that we have here is not intended to reflect everything that we put in our chart.
That's true.
So in the next go-around, when we get to September, when we go to the deeper dive, that's when we are aligning the indicators that we had in our chart with the additional, with the additional data. But I want to make sure, if you're saying we need to change something on the chart, we're clear on what we need to change on the chart versus trying to map what we had on our chart with this spreadsheet, because there aren't the, spreadsheet is not intended to reflect all the things that we had on our chart.
Correct. But, so if we're just talking about this, I'm suggesting if we agree that that we include looking at these subgroups by race and gender. I'm suggesting if we agree that that we include looking at these subgroups by race and gender and also looking at those larger subgroups of students with disability, within those categories of specific learning disabilities. I'm getting all of those numbers from the presentation that you all provided to us in May. That's where I got those numbers from. But this, it was specific learning disabilities, autism, other health impairments and developmental delay, where the four top, you know, where the majority of our kids are in those subgroups. So, I'm suggesting that we look at it.
Because VGLA and all those are included in that? And the VGLA numbers will, are very small and will go away after this year.
This year.
Away, how about the...
VAT.
The VAT.
Right, the VAT will still be in place.
That will still be in place? Okay. So, why will the VGLA numbers go during that?
They have refined the criteria for students who qualify for that down to English language learners. I think it's a double exception. And this year, we had very few, maybe seven. And so, the state is looking at, you know, satisfying a criteria for the new ESSA. And so, under the, yes, the AMO, they had two collection of evidence type or alternate assessments for students with disabilities. And certainly, the primary ones were the VGLA and the VAT. And so, VGLA, I believe, is not meeting the criteria aligned with the federal government's expectation for students with the disabilities. So, I may not have explained that accurately, totally accurately, but we did have a conference call that indicated that they will be going away with it, doing away with it. And this would be the last year.
And for board members to refresh in the public, VGLA is Virginia Grade Level Assessment. So that we're clear. And we're, because of the work that has been going on in special education and how we are looking at students accessing the core curriculum and its assessments, as Dr. Bailey indicated, we're down to only seven students. So, some districts may experience a significant impact with this, but our impact from that would be low.
Me too.
Dr. Gabriel?
Dr. Bailey, if you could, can you go through each of the SOL topics? English, Writing, Math, History, and Science? And just refresh myself and the board on when the more rigorous standards were implemented? I know that on the other presentation, you had said that for English, Reading, Writing, and Science, that they're in their fourth year.
Right.
So, does, so in going back, the new standards for English and Writing were implemented during which school year?
They were implemented in school year 2012, 13. That's when we were assessed on it.
And that, that's when we were assessed on it. So, the results that we see under column 2012, 2013 is when...
Were from the 11, 12 school year.
Were from the 11?
No, no. On this particular chart, it's the actual tested, the data year, if you will. It's the year that we were actually assessed.
Okay. So, God bless you. So, so does that mean that during 11 and 12? Okay, no. So, I understand. So, during that school year is when the new standards were implemented. And 2011, 2012.
Correct.
And history, history is, I think the last one was 2008. And next, this year coming up is when they're going to implement the new standards?
Need to defer to...
Yeah, I, history, it is history.
This year or is it seventeen?
This coming year, they should be tested.
They're doing a restructuring now.
Yeah, so seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, so 2017, 2018. And when are, when are the new standards for math?
See every seven years?
Yeah.
About every seven years, okay. And then, science is also fourth year. So, science during the orange timeframe?
Same time period as the English and Reading, right? Within four years, yeah.
Fourth year, yeah. Um, not right now.
Ms. Doyle?
So, just to confirm, Dr. Bailey, you said six of the twenty-three that are now fully accredited were three-year warrant. Does that mean they now start this year?
That's correct.
And you said of the paired schools, they took the paired schools score. And all of those have now passed? Isn't that the standard?
No, we didn't say that. We just said which schools are paired together.
So, of the pairings, you said, how many of the twenty-three are considered a paired school?
Two.
So, we're saying that one of the three?
Two, yes. Two, two of the three met the requirements as a combined school.
So, they're considered part of the twenty-three?
Yes.
So, we have one that's not, that is either in accreditation denied or to be determined.
Yes.
And just again, the reminder that the paired schools are, the schools that have K two don't have state assessments. And therefore, they have to be paired with a school that has the state assessments, which are the three, five schools. So, that's why you see Willoughby with Ocean View, Poplar Halls in Fairlawn, T.B. Young in Todd Water Park. And that gives you the full complement of grade levels, including an assessed grade. So, that's why you have to have, the school has to be paired with a school that has assessed, state assessments so that they can gain an accreditation level. So, whatever happens that one is driven by the success of the others. And that was one of the things I've mentioned to the board before in terms of how do we pair those schools for success as it relates to shared thinking about the data, shared thinking about professional development. There are certainly nuances by grade levels and preferences in a building, but there should be a common set of actions and language that's used, being used to drive how they build. Because it's not just, okay, the K two students show up at third grade and this is what they did. Same thing that we talk about high schools. High school performance, graduation doesn't begin in ninth grade. It begins all the way back in pre-K and K. And what have been the steps that lead to that level of success? And so, that's why it's important for us to continue the work that we have recognized needs to happen as it relates to those paired schools for success.
And then, of the partially accredited warrant school pass rates of two, do they have to meet full accreditation in sixteen, seventeen to be considered fully accredited? Or could they still be a partial accredited status?
One would be in their third year.
So, the three-year still has a varying on the accreditation status? Even though we now have different levels of accreditation?
Well, once, certainly, once you're fully accredited, it resets.
Right.
I believe that we had a school that last year, they were in their second year of warrant. Now, they're in their third year of warrant. And then, the other school was fully accredited and now they're not.
And then, Dr. Boone, how is it that we come to know about the category of conditionally accredited or to be determined thirteen? They could come back to us with various accreditation status, from denied to partial to whatever some of these other categories are that have come up recently, right?
That's correct. And that's why we see school districts that are putting out, you know, all their schools are fully accredited. When it's that clear cut, we can put it right out there. But because we have those that are still under determination by the state, they show up as TBD. And so, until they've done their final work on it, we're not sure where they're going to be. But again, that was, those were the schools that we applied for a different status, a conditional accreditation, a partially accredited status. We constituted or some other status based on where they were in the school year to just finish in terms of were they third year warrant? And if they were third year warrant, we went ahead and applied because depending upon the results, they could fall into a variety of categories. But failure to apply, they just fall wherever, you know. So, we made the application and made the case based on practices, performance. What do we know about the data, the story behind the numbers, if you will? And so, then we've made applications for those.
I guess my last question goes to, we know what these schools are, the thirteen, the six, and the two. Regardless of the status, they need, they need help.
And I would say all forty-five still need help because we aren't there.
I would agree.
Exactly.
But there's an area clearly here of a need. And so, that comes into staffing, quality of teaching in that school, you know, all sorts of things that we want to be sure that we are focused on in such a great way that I would love to see at some point your plan for how we are addressing the needs even there more so.
And, and we're, we are working to, on that, I mean, we're working toward implementing where we are. One of the things I would say to the board is, again, when I talk about what it is we're doing, be very clear, and I'm going to say this over and over again, we're focused on teaching and learning. I'm not a proponent of certain gimmicks to get bumps in scores. This is a long journey. This is truly a marathon as we're in the Olympic season. This is truly a marathon. This is not the hundred, hundred meter dash. We can do the hundred meter dash and next year, we have to dash again. But if we focus on the marathon, we can get systemic changes and results that are sustainable over time and not just these blips and bumps and, you know, we are always in danger of falling off of where we should be. And so, a lot of what you will hear in terms of the practices is focusing on strengthening the capacity of teachers, strengthening the capacity of our content coordinators as we think about curriculum alignment, curriculum implementation, what instruction looks like, authentic instruction, not worksheet-driven, not program-driven. Those are the supplements to the core curriculum. You will hear a lot about the professional development to support the capacity building because when a teacher has the tools in their box to go forward and implement well, this is what will happen and we will get these sustainable results. And where we begin to know that students are learning, not just passing the scores. Because one of the things that has always been an issue for me as we think about Virginia's system, S, the state was very clear. As when we were trying to say, students who pass the SOL test were reading on grade level. And the state at one point backed them and said, whoa, that's not what we're saying. We're saying they are proficient on a reading test, but it doesn't mean that they are reading on grade level. They've been successful on the test. And so, part of what we started working with this summer with our building principals and central office administrators and assistant principals is how do we define learning? How do we know that our students are learning in a way that they have the prerequisite and requisite skills to be successful in the next grade level? That's why I was excited about the conversations and looking at cohorts of students across grade levels from third to fourth to fifth, because that is closer, will get us closer to the conversations around how do we know that students are learning? I'm going to go somewhere I probably shouldn't go and the state will be mad at me, but I'm going to say it anyway. Of our schools that have met full accreditation, can we unequivocally say students have learned well? The state assessment is not the tool by which we learn that. And so, our internal measures, the things that we will be doing, how we focus on the instructional practices will give us that vantage point going forward. So, we definitely will be talking about what we're doing, how we're doing. But the, the two key points to this, the anchor points for this, strongly align a curriculum that is well implemented and a teacher who has the skill sets to be able to be successful in implementing the curriculum in a way that can lead to results. And how do we support everything around that? How do we bring the systems of support to students, to teachers, and to others? So, it's exactly what we'll be talking about. One of the things that when we get to the deeper analysis and by school analysis is that the scores validate the reasons why I've terminated the lead turnaround partner contracts with our schools. They have not driven to one bit of success in any of the schools that had lead turnaround partners.
If I could, to that point, what is your plan then, moving forward on the lead turnaround partner replacement approach?
Well, part of it is what we do internally. The other piece is we, the state allowed us some flexibility going forward as we, in what they call the transition year, from No Child Left Behind to ESSA. And so, we had options of continuing with our lead turnaround partner for one more year, partnering with state colleges and universities because there had been a call for them to see what they could support or to be able to broker for our own system of support through RFP process. We've gone with the third option.
And if I can also add, this is in keeping with the meeting that I just attended, the state is encouraging school districts to also embrace as part of the lead turnaround partnership is a statewide model that focuses on building leadership capacity, which is in direct alignment with what we are planning with. Whereas, previously, the lead turnaround partner focused on both the leadership model as well as building the instructional capacity of teachers, which is not bad, but we feel that we have the expertise within the ranks of our own division to be able to do that. We just have worked very hard to provide some structure and organization with our reading and math person. So, we just got that information today. It's got a big new sticker on it. So, that's in keeping with what we're doing. We will adjust some of the things that we're doing when we submit our SIG application.
Basically, we're taking that responsibility and accountability in-house, is what you're saying?
We're taking it in-house and with an external partner's support as we finish the RFP process.
Right.
I'll just add that from my perspective and what we've been talking about with our own accountability system, you know, it starts with us, that as a board, we have the opportunity right now and in the continuation of the process of defining what success means like, means to us. So, whether we're talking about whatever the definition of learning is, being able to integrate that into our system, being able to track it, monitor it, get reports on it. That's, at least from my perspective, is part of the idea of, to the extent that we as a governing team are able to find these needs, what our indicators are going to be, what our measures of success are, taking the information we just have, integrate it as part of our benchmarks. That ongoing work that we do as a team and hopefully the division then takes what we've done as a board and then they then build out their accountability system as a division as a whole and then hopefully down to each individual school. All those things begin to, to roll up together. I think over the last several years, it's just been too disjointed. And, but I was, I'm glad to hear you mention a piece about, about the learning because it's, personally, it's always frustrating to me that I think oftentimes as a community, we send mixed messages. So, on the one hand, when the SOL scores come out, everybody gets excited about the SOL scores. Are you accredited, are you not? What's your warning? So, so on and so forth. And then, we'll have a conversation and we'll say, well, the only determinant should not be accreditation. So, being able to do both things, making sure as we established in our accountability system that one indicator is how are we doing in terms of meeting that basic need as far as what the accreditation says? But then, these deeper issues around learning and what does it mean to be a successful graduate and all these other things that we're talking about, to me, is really where that big, big picture gets to evolve. So, I think we are still, and I'm saying we as a board are in the driver's seat where we can establish those ends and that vision and that expectation and then give that over to the administration and have them to then build a plan or report to us how they're doing against those measures that we establish. The other comment slash question I just had, at this level, can you describe, what do you think was done last year that worked? And what is it that we may be doing this year to continue the progress at a, at a district level?
So, let me, I'm going to... So let me, I'm going to answer the second question first and let Dr. Rogers provide the details more of the same. Dr. Rogers?
More of the same of what?
He's going to tell you. What you hear is what we're going to continue doing.
Okay.
I think, here's where I get excited, I have to contain it. You know, we're never where we want to be unless we have all of our schools and all of our students performing at minimal level, levels. However, I am so proud of the work that our schools have done, both the principals as well as our, our teachers and, and cab staff and pulling together and doing some things just a little differently. The first of which is taking a hard, fast look, and we're still looking at the alignment of our curriculum and the manner in which our students are being taught the instruction and then taking a good, hard, fast look at the manner in which we assess students. And part of that process was done through our tiered system of supports and taking a look at how we deliver instruction, taking a close look at our lesson planning and providing feedback to teachers on their lesson planning and division staff providing feedback on the feedback. So this, it was a cycle of conversation, cyclical conversation, I think, a two-way conversation about instruction. So building a culture and a framework of common vocabulary that instruction is important and here are some things in which we can do it, simple stuff, it's kind of back to the basics. So I do attribute the success to paying attention to the alignment of curriculum instruction assessment and then providing meaningful professional development to our, our staff, not only the teachers, but as well to administrators. So I think personally and professionally that the manner in which we continue to do that is to continue to build the capacity and stay the course and not try anything new, but take a needs assessment with the things that we have, what's working, what's not working, and continue to build the upward trajectory, if you will, for the, the schools. I, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction and I, I do want us to make sure that we're continuing to do so. And, you know, we always tend to go back on what's fresh on our mind. I pay close attention to what people say at the division, excuse me, the state level. And one of the things that was mentioned today that really rang true to me was that the success of a, a school is highly dependent upon the teachers who are delivering the instruction. But it's also probably even more important to the leaders who are leading the teachers and providing direction. And that's our job. So when we look at what was successful, it's leadership and it's everybody's responsibility and really making that important in messaging whenever we meet with our building leaders as well as our teachers, that instruction is important. So that's a long answer, but it's the truth.
And what, what Kip is describing is how do we go deeper with practices rather than spreading ourselves so thin and constantly adding more and more and something new? What we're trying to focus on is how do we think about the art of teaching and learning? And one of the things that we do to deepen our practices that, that make the most sense, just constantly putting more of something on the table, you know. I remember when I first arrived, we, we did a presentation of what were some of the computer-based support programs and we were able to show, well, we had this all across the district at one point, but now it's just at this school. And then we introduced this, we, we have to stay the course with something. We, doesn't mean we stay it until we completely failed on it. We make mid-course adjustments. If that's not what's driving what we think should be success, then how do we make adjustments? But just, we're trying to move away from what I call the football huddle pile-on. You know, the player's already down with the ball and, and more players fall on top of it to make sure the ball doesn't move. That's not what we need to do. We need to figure out what's happening with the ball. How do we, we, we get it advanced on, on, on the gridiron and then get to that touchdown point? And not just putting a whole lot more on the plates of folks, but being able to use effectively what's there and to give people voice in what's happening. Something came up recent, today and I, I poll, I sent a poll, question out to principals, gave them the background and said, hey, tell me, is this is an experience that you're having or something you're dealing with? And I got back nearly a hundred percent response before I came in here, but they would say, thank you for asking. So it's about bringing the leaders and the teachers to the table to talk about their practice and giving them voice in it. I spoke to student teachers on Friday at Old Dominion and three other superintendents who are alum, alumni of Old Dominion's educational programs. And one of the things I say in my remarks is that I'm looking for teachers who come in to teach with the passion and the interest of why they went into teaching, that nowhere the standards indicated how you teach. They just said what students need to know as an input, as a minimum level. How you teach it is dependent upon the creativity that we allow happen in the classroom and the supports that we put there. And so seeing that, and too often, as you know, in, in urban settings, we think a school that's underperforming needs more of the roles aligned, the quietness in the classroom and everybody following the same direction. When we know that children learn best when they're actively engaged in the act of learning, putting their hands around it, sometimes with noise, making a mess out of how they think about it, but letting them learn. And that's, that's what we've got to do. And so that's a cultural shift. It's a paradigm shift when we become so linked and attached to what are today's ratings going to be, what are the, and I get that. Please understand, I'm not deflecting the responsibility from me that we have to get our schools to a definition of some level of public success. But underlying in that is we have to care about what happens with our students once they leave us. And that's part of the, the deeper work.
So we're at five after four.
Five after three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't tell time anymore. Five after three.
Does that mean we have more time to discuss?
No. Well, what I was going to say is, just want to remind everyone, so on September fourteenth, for our work session there, we've set aside, really as of right now, two and a half hours and only two things on the agenda. One, for the public session is the academic data review, the deep dive and the continuing discussion. And then the other is any other matters of the board. So I wanted to remind folks of that and then, because we have two more items we want to try to get to before we go into closed session, if we'd like to, there's a couple more questions that we can yield to a quarter after. We can do that, but let's try to make them significant and substantive to this presentation and knowing that, that we're going to come back with, with more. So I saw Ms., first one's check, Ms. Wagner, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking about what you said about the fourteen.
I was going to say before, I didn't know if you had one.
No.
Dr. Gabriel?
So, Dr. Bailey, you had mentioned something in your remarks that you made about the assessments and the comparability. Have, and I don't need an answer on this right now, but just something to think about. Based on the assessments that we did this past school year with the CFAs and the DBAs, do we feel like they have correlated with the scores on the SOLs this year? And do we feel like our assessments are good in giving us a predictable, predictable insight into how the students are learning the material and how we think that they're doing on the SOLs? And I don't need an answer right now, but because we do have this concern about the overtesting and if there are things that we can pull back on and focus more time and energy on learning the material versus testing on the material, it, I think that's something that we might want to take a, a look at as well as we're looking at the general picture of our academic performance in the accountability plan.
Okay. And I would like to, to just say that-
Can you answer some of that? Because I know we still have this discussion around CFAs, DBAs and predictability. So can you at least try to?
Certainly. Our district common formative assessments were designed to be very quick assessments based on what was taught within a recent time period. Our SOL mock tests are more closely aligned to predicting for the SOL performance. We have done some correlation analysis on that and we feel that our SOL mock tests are closely aligned. Certainly our monthly district CFAs cannot be aligned because it's only a small portion of the overall tests. And so as we move forward, we have had some internal discussions, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Rogers and I and other staff members about the assessment plan last year, the pros and cons. And then moving forward, what do we think will, will be best suited for the district this school year?
Thank you.
I had a similar question as, Dr. Rogers, you said the manner in which we assess students. I wanted to ask, you know, what that is. But before we, you know, you can answer that when, when and if you have the information to answer that. But what, I guess what I'm struggling with is, you know, the predictability between the SOL mock tests, which to me, you know, isn't surprising that that is a predict, because that's what it is. And the whole notion of practicing for the test also is counterintuitive to me, to teaching and learning. So if we're not using the CFAs or the, you know, to, as our correlate, then we're really not monitoring teaching and learning. We're monitoring how well a child practices for the test. And as a parent and a board member, I find that just, you know, that's what gets me.
That's what I meant by the manner in which we assess students.
Okay, okay.
And I, I do believe that the district CFAs are used to determine how well the student learned what was delivered within a time period. Did he capture or she capture everything they needed to, skill-wise, to then move forward? And, and the last year's option that we had, we had Form A and then a retesting of Form A to help remediate, but then catch kids so that they could become more proficient. And so not so much, yes, teaching to the test, but helping them to be more proficient as it relates to the objectives that have been taught.
Okay.
And you recall, I, I mentioned to the board that the DBAs are really the first set of information that we glean from the DBAs is a test of our curriculum. How well is the curriculum being delivered? Is it a, a, an alignment or a curriculum problem? Is it a delivery, an instructional problem? How, what do we know about it? So we can look at trends across the district to try to, to make sense out of that. But I, I agree with you as it, as it links to the mock test piece. And I'm back and forth on that. I mean, they are directly aligned to the SOLs. Going forward though, we've got to figure out that nuance between the utilization of a mock test and how do we know that students are learning? Because again, part of it is what do we do to get schools over the bar so that everybody is not breathing down their necks so that they can truly have the elbow room to do more with teaching and learning? And so it's that, it's that juggling that between the assessments telling us, gets us to one place, but it doesn't reflect learning.
And, and as a follow-up to that, is there any discussion, and you may not be there yet, but where kids who maybe, that have taken the SOL mock test and they are proficient in it, how many times are we going to ask students to practice that test before they actually take it? Can we, can we as a board have that discussion that if a child is proficient, that we let them and be enriched in some other way versus continuing to practice for a higher score, which is to me essentially what we're doing, but?
I don't think that's driven by the district. That might be individual school preference.
Is that?
It's the same thing that as we face the fact, a one-size-fits-all model, which I'm trying to break the, the shell on that. Same thing, we put, had students, we said double dosing students or double blocking in English and math as a way of providing immediate intervention for students who aren't successful on the standards. But we also applied the same thing for students who had been demonstrating success on the standards. So we put our honors students in the same double blocking. So what I said to middle school principals in July, I said, I know it's late and we can't get a hundred percent of where we need to go. But I gave middle school principals permission to decouple from the double block honors courses so that there was some other enrichment opportunities. We didn't have new staff to bring on board. So what would they do with that block that they now were freed from as a double block for the core content? And so I said, let's talk with teachers. What are some interest courses? What are some things that they have that could be quarterly electives we could change? And so we won't see a hundred percent of that shift this year, but we, we, the principals were excited that, you know, moving away from this one-size-fits-all model of how we get there rather than meeting students where they are. And I agree with you, if a student has demonstrated proficiency, then they work on, even within that proficiency, there were some areas that they may not have maximized potential. If anything, that's what they should be working on because that's driven by the standards. They shouldn't just be doing the same thing over and over again to get a, a higher score. It's really about what do we know happened within the standards, whether the areas are strengths, whether the areas of some relative weakness and how do we strengthen those areas versus just doing more of the same? You know, it's how many, how many addition problems do you have to do each night to say that you mastered the idea, the process of two-digit addition? And yet we'll send home a hundred problems.
Yeah, right.
See, that's why I was in trouble in elementary.
We're going to end with Ms. Doyle and, and then we'll come back in September for, for more, so.
So you indicated, Dr. Rogers, that some of the things we've done right was a review of our lesson. Dr. Boo, when you first came, teachers gave you feedback that lesson planning was burdensome. Teachers going back to school this year, my question to you, would they say it's less burdensome? It's equal to or greater than last year and what has changed?
Would they say?
Yeah, what would they say in terms of the burden nature?
They would say they've had multiple opportunities to provide feedback in the revision of the, the template that we're using and that was purposefully designed with their input to be less burdensome for that. You know, we continue to encourage teachers to meet as a team, to plan lessons and activities to lessen the burden. And we've also explored some of the possibilities of providing them with exemplars to use for lesson planning, particularly in key areas that we know that students have difficulty in. So I would hope that the conversation is such that we would get feedback from them that it's not as burdensome, particularly at the elementary level.
I will say in conversations with principals, teachers and both of the teacher associations, there've been a lot of kudos relative to the changes and the fact that we didn't just do another something to folks, but that we really asked for their input in making the improvements. So the early information we're hearing is that folks are pleased with where we are. And we also have a template that's, that's catered to like a secondary level. So it doesn't have to look like the elementary level. So it wasn't just one form and everybody had to do the same. But we really addressed across levels too.
So I've sensed from the board the desire to continue, at least maybe with a couple more. So I just wanted to note that when we go into closed session, if for some reason we don't finish everything in closed session, we'll reconvene after the business meeting, Ms. Wagner, then Dr. Robinson.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm going to-
It's okay. No, I mean, go with the, I mean, if you've got a rhythm, let's stick with it. So I know Ms. Wagner, go ahead.
Well, I just, one of the things that relates to some of those questions that you are, or things that you were concerned about, teachers are so used to the teaching, reteaching, not being creative in terms of not being allowed to be creative in the classroom because it was so engrossed in making sure that the test was passed and they had to continue to do the mock test. Are we producing some professional development for these teachers to let them see that they can relax and that there are some, that it's okay to, to be more creative?
Relax isn't a term that I would use because relax may mean I don't have to keep the pedal to the metal.
And I don't mean it that way.
And I, I, I understand. But no, and, and that's going to be the larger culture shift, both for principals and teachers and some of us in central office.
Which will also affect climate.
That's right. And so that's one that has to come over time. You know, as I was talking with some teachers this summer and we were discussing this, this whole aspect of the work and, and, you know, they said, I would love to do it. I was doing some of that, but my principal said. And so that's why we started this conversation with principals that I, in July at our Leadership Institute. How do you lead for learning? How do you lead for that type of results versus getting a test score? How do you lead for that type of results versus getting a test score? And it's going to be a hard crack, nut to crack, because if, when accreditation ratings come out and your school is not one of those that's fully accredited, then what? And so, that's the work. I mean, but we, that, that culture has become so ingrained in Norfolk that it's going to be huge lifting to get us out of that. But again, we're going to lead through that work as we visit classrooms and we do walkthroughs with principals. And when we see these examples, then we're going to help them figure out how to, give them some tools perhaps to support their teachers and ways in which they're thinking. Because I've been very clear that that standard classroom where kids aren't engaged, they're just, you know, drill, skill, and kill, is not going to work for me.
Exactly. You know, I went over to Horizons, and I know it's a small class size or whatever, but the teachers were, learning was fun. It was fun for the instructor and it was fun for the student. And, go on.
And I would say, and guess what? For those places where we not had learning be fun, we haven't gotten the results. So, why are we going to keep doing the same thing?
Right.
So, now, I'm like, let's make learning engage. Let's make sure it's meaningful, not just play, not just that point of relaxing, hey, anything goes. But, right, but how do we make it such that, you know, I've, you shared with the board the example before of a teacher, of a first-grade teacher who was teaching across several standards. And it had, it was civics, math, science, technology, writing, English reading, and all of that. And every student had a responsibility in running for office, in writing their campaign speeches, in creating their campaign posters, of listening to the messages, assessing and evaluating what they heard, building their voting booth, going into the process of voting, having the tellers who would, who would add, you know, tally the votes of, that were cast, and being able to celebrate the winner. Those students will never, ever forget the electoral process and the civics and the math of how you tally, what percentage, and all of that. And every standard was covered. That's learning. Those students will never, ever forget that. Same way when I was in first grade and we had a tasting table to learn about the census.
You were in first grade?
Yeah, 115 years ago, I was in first grade. And I had a first-year teacher in first grade who had set up a census table where we were blindfolding. We had to taste, smell, or, and all of that. And to this day, there are a couple of those tastes and smells that have never left me. And I know exactly what they are and what those senses. I understand now what senses do for you. I've never forgot that. And so, learning can be fun.
Yes.
Our sense of having to meet accountability standards drove some educational leaders to say that we had to step away from that engaged classroom, drill it into the heads of our students. And I think we have enough examples across the district that when we've attempted that, we haven't gotten those results. So, we have to go in a different direction, and we have to support the teachers to be comfortable and confident enough to go there along with the principals.
And not relaxed.
Not relaxed.
Dr. Robinson?
Exhaling maybe, but not relaxed.
I appreciate the conversation. Thank you for extending it out a little bit. It's got to be about teaching and learning. We have, as a, as a culture, we have become so obsessed with the assessment that we forgot about what teaching is. That's why I appreciate the conversation. Looking at it from a beginning teacher's standpoint, I would see there would be a benefit of providing, A, the mentorship is absolutely critical in creating success for newer teachers. And because of the size of our district and the turnover, we have a lot of new teachers. Second thing is, is I think that we should try to figure out how to ease the burden for first, second, maybe even third-year teachers that much more by providing the lesson plans as much as possible. And that, and with the mentors, how to, how to write lesson plans so that when they transition from a rookie teacher, a beginning teacher, a novice teacher into one more, one that's more seasoned. That way, instead of trying to focus on leading the lesson plans to the principal's liking and what's necessary, they can focus on, on teaching and learning to create, to create the, the activities and the, and the processes that's, that would make them a better teacher.
Well, you heard Dr. Rogers mention where we are encouraging grade level and content level common planning. I think that's where we get a lot of value, particularly for novice teachers. They get to hear their, their colleagues talk about how they plan for a lesson. And then, they get an opportunity to come back and talk about the success of the lesson. And where there's some teachers that got results and others didn't, and hey, let me learn from what you did. How do we go back and reinforce that? And I would agree wholeheartedly. The idea of including some exemplars in terms of planning for the lesson is, is that tool that will, again, support beginning teachers a great deal. One of the things that I'm most excited about, I've been meeting with a group of retired teachers since earlier this spring. And we've, I've invited them and we're going to receive them to be part of our new teacher orientation. These are retired Norfolk Public Schools teachers who have committed to helping our novice teachers be successful. And so, we're going to have a table and have some giveaways and some things, but they're also going to have a little sign-up page where teachers can say if they'd like to have a listening ear or some support in setting up their classrooms and those things, and maybe any support throughout the year from a group of committed retired teachers. So, we think we'll be one of the first in the area that we know of that will actually bring back retired teachers to tell them, this is why it's great to work in Norfolk, and these are the supports that you have. So, we are really excited about that.
Why did you selected those teachers?
They came to me. And so, they said, "How can we be of assistance?" And so, over time, we've developed ways in which we can support new teachers.
Because they're on third, plenty more.
Oh, they have plenty more. They, they, so, how, how do they go about the process? You'll have to talk to them. I'm just meeting with a core group.
We built those details. I just want to make sure we get through, so.
Got anything else?
You're good.
So, Dr. Boone, what concerns me are schools like Monroe and Lindenwood where you have this high concentration of poverty and all that goes with that, that, you know, when you go over to Rosemont, you, you see that type of teaching and learning that you're talking about here. And we see that at some of the other schools where there is the kind of diversity. So, I guess my, my question would be that in these types of schools, are you hopeful that, that we will be able to do this apart from trying to diversify the student, the student body?
Oh, absolutely. I will remind the board that in the early 2000s and the implementation of SOLs in the state accreditation system, we had what were known as the 90-90-90 schools. Schools that had 90% poverty, 90% students of color, and 90% of better success on SOLs. And so, while poverty creates another layer of challenges in terms of opportunities and enrichments that students have had in their readiness for school and in their support for schools, we have demonstrated as a district that we can rise to the occasion. You know, one of the things I've had to say to United for Children is poverty is not a precursor to the ability to learn. The challenges to learning are symptomatic of poverty and all that goes, that go along with it, as you indicated. And so, the first thing is that we've got to make sure that there's a belief system that these children can learn. And secondly, how do we engage them in the learning in a way that they're excited and we can begin to see these students blossom, who are potentially high achievers and gifted students who have been shadowed by the way in which we've been teaching them and expecting them to demonstrate their knowledge? And when we open up the opportunities to a variety of teaching styles in these classrooms, we will see students thrive. The wraparound services work that Dr. Birdsong is focused on will help us bring to bear and the community to support. What are the things that are, the areas that need stability within a student's life outside of the school day? We're best at teaching and learning. We can, we're, we're responsible for that school day. But how do we partner with social services, health department, housing authority, workforce development, and others to create stability within that family such that the things that they have to worry about or the issues that they bring to school lessen because there's that home stability? That's the purpose of the wraparound piece and what happens. In schools, as, like those that you mentioned, we're going to be looking very closely as to what are the wraparound needs? And, you know, we've talked about the wraparound needs of our military children. That's why they're in that portion of wraparound and interagency collaboration because of the multiple moves that they have to make or the impact of deployments and family reassignments on the children who are here. They, too, have some instability. It's not a negative instability, but it's the reality of being a military family. And so, how do we make sure that they have the social, emotional, and life supports around them so that they are successful? So, that's exactly what we want to have happen. I think, you know, the longer-term conversation for this community and others is how do we begin to address concentrated areas of poverty? And that's, that's a big conversation because when we think about neighborhood schools, our neighborhoods are faced with concentrated poverty. Therefore, we have to talk about housing and we have to talk about economic development. And frankly, you know, the days of desegregation where somebody was forced to move, those days are gone. That people of poverty want access to quality services, but they will tell you, "But why am I the one that has to move in order to receive them?" And so, that's where we get at our equity policy and all of those things. Why do I have to, why does my child have to be bused across town just to get this? Why can't it happen in my neighborhood? So...
On that note, I'll just say to you, Reverend Haywood, I know that in your question, you were saying, "How do we ensure that our schools that do have higher concentrations of poverty have even more classrooms and teachers that are operating in the way that Dr. Boone described?" Because we know, because you see it every day when you're in there mentoring, that we do see that going on. We just want to see it more at all our schools and across our entire division. With that, let's move on to the next agenda item, and that will be our school board policy review. So, we will give staff the opportunity to shift from the table. And I think, Dr. Boone, I think the, in the absence of Dr. Birdsong, those of us on the policy committee may be doing the little entree, but I still turn to you in case you have...
I'll support you where I can.
It is that you like to address on, on the two policies that we're going to discuss, or the policies and the regulations we're going to discuss before we move forward.
Well, I think, again, we've, we've talked at length about what are some, what are policies and how are we implementing certain policies as it relates to FOIA's, excuse me, and others? And what do we need to do to make sure we have an effective and efficient process? So, Ms. Tanner's here as we talk about the FOIA and what we know, if there are some questions around that. And so, so that's one of the policies. And the other policy deals with, I'm trying to pull the other one up.
With the facilities.
The facilities use. And that's, that's been the, the ongoing conversation around how do we create some standardization of practices and costs as it relates to that.
Yeah, so, just as a reminder, when we met as a policy committee, we recommend as a board, we just spend some time just going through this. We know it's part of our role and responsibility as board members. We are charged to stay up on FOIA. But also, at least from my perspective, it was the first time for us in a while as a, as a board to really talk about what's going on. What is it that we're doing as a division as far as FOIA is concerned? Or Dr. Robinson, I were, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or we were emailing or talking, and he reminded that at one point, we would get monthly updates or weekly updates that would kind of give the board a sense of, you know, how many FOIA's we were receiving. So, really, the purpose of this is the one to just talk through the policy, where we are with the requirements of having a FOIA officer, which Ms. Tanner is our FOIA officer. And then, just talk about how we're currently doing things as a division, and then are there any changes we would like to see take place as a board, especially as we are FOIA often, because I know I am. And, and trying to make sure that, not only that we comply, but that as a board, we know how we want to comply when things are FOIA specifically for us, which may be a little different than all the hundreds of FOIA's you all may receive as a division that we may or may not be privy to.
Let me also, before Karen shared presentation, thank Jack and members of the legal department for their assistance in helping us make sure we're staying true to the spirit and intent of FOIA requirements. And so, some that aren't clear-cut, we immediately work with them to help us navigate those. And can't thank them enough for the support that they provide us in thinking about these FOIA's.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, board members, Dr. Boone. I think this was a long time coming for you, Mr. Jordan, so I'll just get started. We all know what a FOIA is. It could be something that's submitted orally and writing through email, letter, or a phone request. And it's a process that comes with that. And I'm the FOIA officer that was required to first designate one by July 1. And we send NPS employees, when a FOIA comes in, you all may know that we have five working days to respond. If we can't do it within that five working days, we ask for an extension of seven additional days, and we quote that in our, in our request to the requester. And if we process it, we send, when I process it, I'll send it to whoever department. So, it takes a moment for me to see it, then figure out, consult with Dr. Boone and say, "Who do you think is the best department to handle this?" Because we've got that five-day window or that seven-day window. And so, I'll email the information to the actual individual who can answer it. And some FOIA's may require a consultation with the city attorney's office. Jack Cloud and I had become best buddies before it was Carlos Soleria. But we want to make sure that, because this is important, that we're getting the right information, we're doing the right thing. And also, FOIA's that require a time cost estimate, we charge employee hourly salary to fulfill the request. And on here, okay, we'll just go to the next one. Here's the total amount of FOIA's for 2015 and 16. For 2015, we had 58. And from January 2016 to August 2016, we've had 40. So, a total for 2015-16 is 98 FOIA's. The cost for 2015, it was $1,577.7. And from January to August so far, the cost is $660.29. And as a practice, we provide the request of the cost, like I said, between that five days and between the seven days, to let them know how much that FOIA's going to cost before we begin to process it. So, total is $2,230.36 that we've collected for those two years. Estimated staff time for 2015-16 is 44 hours, and this is quantified for paid FOIA's, the FOIA's that were paid for. For 2016 so far is 14 hour, 14 and a half hours, and then for 2015, it was 30 hours. And the total of staff time is calculated according to the FOIA's, like I said, that have been paid. Costs are determined by the hourly salary and the time required for the request. And the cost and time estimates will differ according to staff members fulfilling it. It may be one department that may be a top administrator that has to fulfill that FOIA, or maybe someone that their administrative assistant will fulfill it. So, the costs may be different.
And if I can, as a reminder to board members, costs generally come in when they, there's information that we don't have readily available. We try not to charge for anything that we can capture easily or have readily available. So, it's not a standard that everything gets a charge for.
And employees may need to research, gather information, or have meetings to, in order to ascertain the cost of that FOIA. And the FOIA officer's time, my time to do this, is not factored into the cost of these FOIA's.
Do they have some kind of formula?
It could be my, if, okay, let's see. It could be an administrative assistant who makes this particular amount of money an hour, and then how many hours she or he or she would take to perform it. Or it could be Dr. Bailey at her particular hourly salary rate, and then how much time it takes for her to fulfill what the request is. So, that's how the monies would be. So that's how the monies would be quantified. So it's not a standard rate. It's all upon who the employee is that's fulfilling that FOIA.
Position.
And the position. Yeah. And with those meetings and discussions, finding out, like a Dr. Bailey may have to get with a couple of team members and figure out, how do we best answer this? And then I'm the, I'm the one who holds that information, so I'm going to have to be the one to actually do the work. So that's how we figure out the hourly salary. Okay. Estimated staff time for unpaid FOIA's. We do not collect data for staff that perform the unpaid FOIA's. And there's a lot of those, as you can see, that we don't charge for that. When I receive a request, I email it to the employees and follow the request as completed. My time is not included unless I'm the holder of the information. If I have the information, then I would charge whatever information I have and add that into FOIA cost. FOIA's that do not require payment may be, like Dr. Boone said, maybe less than an hour, 30 minutes, is readily available, and we try to help and process those and don't charge for those FOIA's.
And I think it's important to recognize, you may ask, well, why are we charging? Because this is in addition to what we're working on on a daily basis. And so FOIA's that require a great deal of time, lots of research and everything else requires either time after the standard work hours or in addition to those work hours to, to be able to accomplish.
So that's a quick overview of how many FOIA's we've had, what the costs are, and the fact that, you know, there's a lot of staff time put in the ones that are not paid for, and what have you. So any other questions?
Questions on this part, Reverend Haywood?
Yes. Of the total number of FOIA's that you have gotten this past year, how many of them are without cost?
Uh, let's see, yeah. For 2015, we had two that were paid for, and the remaining ones were not. So if you subtract two, so it's 56 that we did not charge for for 2015. And if for 2016, five were paid for, so it's 35 that weren't paid for. I mean, that weren't, yeah.
That weren't charged.
That weren't charged. Excuse me, that weren't charged.
The other question is, I've heard, well, let me just ask this. In comparison to our nearby divisions, what are our costs like? Are our costs comparable for FOIA's to that of nearby divisions?
Like I said, it all depends who has to perform the work. They do from, because it's considered a FOIA if I ask them, how many FOIA's did they get? But they, from conversations, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, we all get around the same amount of FOIA's.
And the cost? I mean, I know there, there've been a couple of FOIA's and through Karen's contacts with her colleagues, been able to determine that our costs were in line with what they were paying.
Yeah, because there, I know that there have been a perception that our FOIA costs.
Yeah, well, I think that was designed to insight our FOIA process, not necessarily factually accurate. You also have to look at what's the nature of the FOIA's that we've received versus other districts. Because, again, you know, it's information that we have readily available, you know, since I've been here, I'm very clear, we aren't going to charge for things that, that we know. That, for example, and Karen in doing her work, as she always does, there was a FOIA that was going to cost like $72, $71.58. I say, we aren't going to charge for something like that. That's, you know, under a threshold. And even though we had to collect the data, the data were very easy to pull together. And so, but again, I think there's not a standard of practice of how they do it, of how we do it. It would be dependent upon what another district does, their process, how, how they calculate it. But I also venture to say that particularly the, the pilot requests that we received have always required, many of them have required us to go very deeply into data, to assemble data and, and whatever else. General ones, you know, we get, we had a request the other day. Karen sent the question around to us, it was about some particular vendor. We checked in, we found out we didn't have a relationship with that vendor, we responded done. Probably took an hour for everybody to weigh in, but that was it.
And I was going to add that the, the process of calculating is the same as what the city uses. The idea is you cannot make a profit off it, but you have a right to do. Some of these can cost a lot of time for.
So for those FOIA's that we do require payment, are Mr. Cloud's hours calculated into that payment fee structure as well?
No.
So it's just an NPS employee straight up and down?
Yes.
Even though Jack Cloud's considered our counsel?
Right, just as though I don't, my salary is never calculated in. And if it's a major FOIA and I have to review it and give the nod that our response is appropriate, mine doesn't get calculated in either.
And there's also some question for the law.
If we, oh, I'm sorry. If there is a parent who requests a FOIA and cannot afford it, how do we do that?
The research is the same. If they ask for something that requires us to pull together a lot of data, we'll try to work with them, work with them to see if they want to revise their FOIA requests where it's affordable or something at no cost. But sometimes we get some, not only parents but citizens, we get some very interesting requests for FOIA's. And so we try to work with them to see what's the information they're really requesting. Because outside of that, they've asked for a lot and it's going to cost them. So parent, community member, attorney, media, we apply the same standard of how we approach the FOIA's across the board. There, there's no differentiation there. And as, just as we will work with the media to try to negotiate theirs and what they're asking for, we'll do the same thing with parents, attorneys, and their community.
So can you, because you have a second part to this, correct?
No, good.
Because we're going to go through the policy and the form. But just going back to the question that Reverend Haywood asked earlier and, and the response that, that Norfolk's FOIA requests are about the same as other divisions, why, why is that? I mean, Virginia Beach is, you know, significantly larger than we are. Portsmouth is half our size. What, what you're saying that the requests that we receive are about the same, can you just?
The number. Sometimes we'll come together when we get a FOIA and say, did you receive this? Some will say, yes, no, I didn't. It could be a reporter, it could be a business, it could be an organization, it, it could be a run the gamut of things of why they may get more than us or we may get less than them. But I think we all pretty much, when it comes to the media, we're getting the same FOIA's.
Focus on the media. So if you say for the media.
It's the citizenry. Whatever, whatever the citizenry wants to know, then that's what they'll FOIA and ask. So it's no one indicator saying we get more information or requests for this or for that. It's up in the air. It could be things like RFPs, you know, bids that went out that people want information on. So it could be a gamut of things.
And, and then I know as we talk about the, the policy and the regulation that describes how it's supposed to get transferred over to a form, from the, from a board member's perspective, in this process, y'all don't calculate our time in here. So.
No, we don't calculate our time in U.S.
Oh, my gosh.
The time piece of it, I guess I'm really trying to get to from a process standpoint, how should we in, or should we, at least in terms of what we try to calculate, not in terms of charging someone, but just in terms of time? Because we all, we are part-time. So I know sometimes I'll get a request and then I have to spend time thinking about the requests and then speaking to you or depending upon what the request is. I might have to speak to others in terms of trying to even work with you or work with the division on how to respond to the request. So there is that, that time associated with that. And I'm just asking from a process standpoint, what would you have us to do when we, when we receive a request? And then would you like for us to try to track and share the time that we spend as, as well?
Let me take a, a first pass at this and then Ms. Tanner can certainly talk about from her aspect. I think it would be helpful to us to begin to try to quantify the total amount of time that various FOIA's undertake. And so certainly, if it's taking you all a certain number of hours, it, if you want our assistance in responding to that.
Have your assistance.
And, and to that, just tell us, you know, it took me about three and a half hours to come up with this. And then that way, we can keep our internal data on that. Now, in terms of costs, we would take your school board's salary and divide it by your hourly rate, and that would be the cost associated if we pass that on. But I don't think the board is looking to pass off. But I agree. Collecting the hours, the amount of time that, that these requests. I think it's important. It's an important advocacy piece as we, as we deal with things, you know, one of the things I've said to the policy is sometimes just pick up the phone and ask me. And it doesn't have to be a FOIA. And so trying to, beginning to see a little more of that happen recently. But, you know, it's a mindset that we find ourselves in. It's interesting when we get these FOIA's from someone across the country because they're researching something, that they're trying to prove something. And some strange place out, we never expected, and they have a FOIA for all of this stuff. And so a lot of times, we have to make sure that those are legit entities before we even get into the process. So that even becomes part of our FOIA response.
And I was just going to add that whether it's a school board member or someone else, really the first thing you should do if you get a FOIA is forward it to Karen as the FOIA officer. Time limit runs from the point you did it, not from the point that she gets it from you.
And that's what I was going to suggest. If it's email, if it's in a form, just however you receive it, send it to me. And we do have a FOIA email account. It's foia@npsk12.com. And that's where we, that's a nice tracking record too of where all the FOIA's are, in addition to the tracking sheet I, I've been keeping for FOIA's.
And, and then the other question I was going to ask, Attorney Cloud, you've mentioned that our process mirrors the city's. Can you explain that a little more, what do you mean by that?
Well, the, the city also has a, a FOIA officer now, just as all government entities in Virginia are required to have. They handle the FOIA's initially. All of them are supposed to, when it works properly, come to them. People, you know, other employees that get them or officers are supposed to forward them immediately to them. Then a certain amount that they, they can handle then on their own, and those that they cannot, they will approach. Currently, I'm the FOIA person for the city attorney's office. They'll approach me and I'll work with them. The, the basic policy under FOIA, I should add, is that public records are public. And so general, the general rule is that the records, if they're public records, they're available to the public. The exemptions that are there are narrow exceptions, and the courts construe them narrowly. That's important to remember, just the general rule is that people have a right to access to public records.
And, I'm sorry, anyone else have? And on the, on the fee side, so we have scenarios where I think maybe at the last business meeting, we had a parent who came forward and had a FOIA and indicated that there was a charge associated. We've had other parents say that there's been a different charge. Can you all just elaborate a little more on, I think, Dr. Boone, you were saying that we try to be consistent with, with what we charge. But can you speak to that a little bit more?
We let the parents know, just as we will any other entity, what the cost will be to fulfill their FOIA requests. And then Karen, Tanner, or others will talk with the request of the information to see if there's a way in which they would like to modify their FOIA requests such that the information is less costly. And so it's the same way we engage with everyone else. We, we give them an option if they want to change it. But the idea is that, now, we do not charge parents for their own child's records. Okay, student records, it belongs to, but when you start asking for information related to a variety of other student groups and everything else, we have to assemble that.
I guess the last thing I have for the board, so in, to my knowledge, at least, I guess I should say, my experience, there have been situations where it's been determined, so if they, if a FOIA is made of the division and there's consultation between the superintendent and the legal team as to whether or not you're going to charge or how you're going to respond, those, those communications take place. I haven't necessarily had the experience, and I don't know if any other board members have had the experience, where if we've been FOIA'd and then a determination is going to be made whether we consider something exempt or whether or not we're going to charge, that, that there's a board piece in that loop where, where we get to have some input into what our response is going to be as a, as a board. So, so my question is, should there be? I mean, I would be an advocate for it should be. But can you just talk about, because right now, what tends to happen, at least in the past, the determination would be made, I guess through the superintendent's office in consultation with the legal office. A response would be provided to the requester, but it's not necessarily anything that would come to the board first to give the board a heads up what is being responded to on behalf of the board.
So I see two ways for us to address this. One deals with whether or not we should tell you what we determine the assessed value to be of a particular FOIA, what the cost would be. However, when we put that out to the full board, there's issues of deliberation online outside of a public meeting. And so your weighing in on it could be a problem. Am I too far askew on that one? Because I know.
I'm not suggesting a debate. I'm just simply saying in terms of some place in the process where, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that the board needs to be in the middle of every division's FOIA request.
No, I mean board FOIA's, is what I'm saying. If it's to, to the board collectively, either we're going to have to poll you all individually, because if we do the entire board and you weigh in as an entire board, then you're deliberating outside of the public eye. The other piece is we have a time issue. Five days to give the initial response as to whether or not we're going to apply or whether we need additional time. And so, you know, I can certainly, we can certainly let you know as board chair, let the board chair know that we've determined that this particular cost, FOIA, well, we've assessed it at costing X. How you all give us feedback is, is important, but just know that the clock is ticking.
The time limit would be one of the biggest problems. Because right now, that, you know, frankly, they're up to right at the last minute. And once you go over, you're in violation and subject to lawsuit, attorney's fees as well as fines. But I would also say this, that FOIA requests, or they may come to anyone, they're really a request of the record keeper. That typically, you know, for the school board, there would usually not be any particular records that you all are personally keeping. I mean, even your, your email is not kept by you, it's kept by information technology. So that there's a real sense that the request, but I understand what you're saying, comes to you, and then people, you know, people are going to take whatever answer's given as coming from you, whether it's, it's given when you are on. But, but it's really a question of, of what records exist and who is keeping them and how much, who's going to have to do the research for them in terms of the, the fee. And then, like I said, with the exemptions, the exemptions are meant to be narrow so that the general rule is that the records should be available if they exist, unless you meet one of the four or five fairly narrow general exemptions. And then there's maybe, there's a couple hundred very specific exemptions for specific bodies and things like that that wouldn't necessarily involve the school board at all. But we could certainly, we could attempt to involve the school board for those that, that the school board, that come through the school board. I just think that way I just think that way would need to be left with that, you know, we would, we could tell you where it was in terms of process, but that there will be occasions where there's just not going to be time enough to consult with the board before the deadline is run. Okay, it's sometimes, you know, they, and even the seven days, the five days is really the restriction. The seven days doesn't apply in every case. The seven days is for when the question is such that you don't have time in five days to be able to determine if the records exist or not, and if they do, to be able to get a sense of what it may cost to, to actually produce them. It's that, you know, you get a certain amount of requests, more from the media, I guess, than, than from individuals, but sometimes from individuals, where it's just going to take many, many hours to be able to determine just if the records in fact exist, and then to try to calculate what it's going to cost to actually come up with an estimate of what it's going to cost to actually find them and deliver them. But in any case, they, they really have to be delivered at the most within 12 working days. There is no extension beyond that, although the, the press and the media are usually very willing to work with you where it's, it's clearly a very large request that's going to take some time, as long as you give them a sense within the, the 12 days that you are going to be able to provide them or not, and what the price will be.
What I just think is important, so on the, on the agenda, we have these policies and the forms that are on our consent agenda. So if you look at the, the change in the, in the policy, it's changing to Norfolk City School Board complies with the Freedom of Information Act. And so, again, my comments, my comments are not trying to get us in the middle of your 98 requests or however many it may be, but if a determination is going to be made that there's a charge or not a charge, or we're not going to comply, or it's an exemption, when that communication is being made to the requestor, is that communication being made in the name of the school board, or is it being made on behalf of the division?
Well, the, the school board, as it appears in your policies, the, the school board is the official name of the entity.
Right.
That's people sometimes loosely call the Norfolk Public Schools. So really, any legal reference to the Norfolk Public Schools should say the school board of the city of Norfolk. That's your, that's your, the official entity's name. If that was, however, if that made the board uncomfortable, we could certainly modify that to make it clear that it's a decision that's being made by the administration.
I mean, I'm not uncomfortable, I just want to make sure, because what, you know, we get the, the communication back from the public that I requested X, and you all denied it, or you all charged this, or you all responded in a certain way, typically, we are not in that loop. So I'm saying, if that's going to be a response to something, and maybe you all have to be able to have some judgment as to when it's appropriate, I just don't think it's, I don't want the board to be blindsided that some request has come in and we don't know anything about it, and some response has gone forward, and then we get questioned, and then we're caught in the blind. That's what I'm trying to, it's a communication piece I'm trying to make sure we're addressing.
Well, certainly, if it's a FOIA request to, to the board itself, you will be notified that it was a request to the board, or either you will have already received it and notified us. And we can certainly share with you what the final response and disposition of the FOIA is, so that you won't be blindsided by the information. And I think sometimes we've done that to share, this is what was sent out in a FOIA request, depending upon the nature of the request, so that you all had the same information that the requestor received.
Anyone else have anything on this? Ms. Tanner, anything else? So I just want to be clear, so on the consent agenda, for this particular one, KBA, we have, we already designated Ms. Tanner as our FOIA officer, but we have the form and other pieces associated with it on the, on the consent agenda. All right. Oh, Ms. Basing.
I'm sorry, so, so just to, so once a FOIA, an email comes in, or this form will be sent to that individual to complete, and then?
Well, technically-
Go ahead.
What I was going to say is, you cannot require a person to fill out a form.
Okay, that's-
The form is meant to help them help us.
Yeah.
Because you can, and you do get requests that are just so vague, you don't know how to respond to them. So there, there's a duty on the requestor to have, to be able to have something relatively concrete.
Okay.
However, you cannot force someone to put a request in writing. They have a right to make an oral request and only an oral request.
That's the, that's the clarity I just wanted to be.
We accept all of those.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a update on our community use facilities, fees, and insurance, just as a reminder. We, we have a policy that's out there. We worked with, the staff actually worked on putting together new fees, updated fee structure associated with the policy. We put that policy out for public comment, or the regulation out for public comment for 60 days. We've since received comment both externally and internally. And what you have before you under KGZC, I think that's the right one, you see the application for lease of school facilities, and then you also have the actual policy associated with that. From the time that we put this out for public comment, the difference between the version that we put out for public comment and what we have today is mostly syntax. We received some updates internally from school nutrition. I think most of us have seen comments that came in, in response to the, the fee structure that's out there. But I just want to make sure that the board is clear, the only delta between what we put out for comment and what we have before us today is mostly some syntax, making sure that school nutrition is correct. But in terms of the overall fee structure, there's no recommendation at this point coming from the administration for a change in fee structure from what we had back in June.
The only other thing I want to say is that, again, the idea of these regulations, of this regulation is to support both community access as well as the upkeep of our facilities, because we do, our core function is to serve as an educational building, as an educational entity. And being a public building, we try to make that available. With the, as you all see, our use of facilities reports in, in, in school board meetings, it, it's, it's very apparent that we have a lot of utilization. And so things such as our paper supplies and all of that is eaten up by the use, and so we have to have a way to recoup the cost associated with outside use, because, you know, obviously electricity's going to be on 24/7, but do we have to run the air conditioning 24/7 on the weekends and, and those things? And so that increases costs. Our, our proposed fee structure is very, very nominal. I shared with the group some charge, fee charges I had for, for different schools, and believe me, these are mere pittance compared to what some districts charge, particularly for newer facilities and very large facilities. And there's also no way that the district can absorb the personnel costs associated with these rentals. And so I know that sometimes, well, you know, why do I have to pay what, we're going to, we'll secure the site, we're responsible. And so we, you know, we just can't underwrite the staff costs associated with the utilization. And again, I, I think Mr. Claude said earlier, FOIA requests are not a money-making entity. We aren't making money off these rentals when you look at the, the cost. We're just trying to cover our costs and upkeep of facilities and backfilling any utilized materials.
Ms. Doyle?
I agree, Dr. Boone, that truly these entities are community assets. You know, we merely manage them for the goodness of the community, but in Frank, they are community assets that we should allow for folks to have the ability to use. So thank you for that. Thanks for the update here. Two questions. Does this section called parking lots and school grounds, was it written and taken to account, was it written with the intent that if a restaurant wanted to use a recreation center's, I mean, a school's parking lot, that they could do so on a regular basis from, for a year or five years out?
You mean like a future?
So in the, in the-
If there's a restaurant that needs additional parking-
Oh, oh, okay.
And they are adjacent to a school, and they would like to use that school's parking lot, was this written with the intent that that could happen?
No. The, as they worked on the policies and regs, it was a overarching perspective. It wasn't, nothing was written in here for a specific use. But if you look at the application that's attached-
Right.
It, there's a notation in there that the maximum lease time is six months. And so a entity, depending upon going through that process, that wanted to lease for six months, they could do that. And then operationally, whatever they wanted to do internally, as far as trying to determine if they wanted to continue that, would be something they would have to review. But there's nothing in here that provides any type of special consideration for, for restaurants.
Right, and I wasn't asking for special or implying that it was.
I'm sorry.
But just, does this allow for that to happen? And the answer is yes, if they meet the criteria, they can pay $10 an hour on a lease basis-
Up to six months.
Up to six months. Okay. And then secondly, we did get a comment from RPOS regarding our joint use agreement, which I viewed as separate and apart from this anyway. So did we respond just to let them know that that's active and working well and separate and apart from this?
Well-
Recreation parks and open spaces?
We have a joint use agreement for any facility.
I thought you said our POS.
No. The interesting piece is, is the statement that the city charges us nothing and we're charging them. Venture to say, the city does charge us. When we look at costs we've paid for utilizing scopings, other entities, it's, it's not 100% free. I think what we can consider if there's a long-term piece, I mean, again, these costs are not exorbitant. And as we think about activities and events from that, we certainly partner with the city. And we are usually part of whatever they are sponsoring, therefore it would necessarily be cost. Now, if you want to come to one of our schools for training outside of the school day, we still have to have staff there to cover it. So even if there was a potential to waive the whatever per hour rental fee or the total rental fee, we cannot waive the staff costs associated with it.
And I'm not suggesting we do that.
Oh, yeah, but that was the-
The answer is yes. So there's been communication back and forth.
And we will follow up, following today's meeting relative to, you know, the, their input has been acknowledged, and the outcome of that will be based on board action today, and then we'll follow up with that.
Okay, because that joint use agreement was long in the making, and we want to make sure that nothing disrupts that relationship between the two.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Haywood?
Yes. Dr. Boone, there have been a number of organizations who have used the facilities for nothing. So with the new fee structure, the first question I have is, if they have already signed a contract for this year, will this, will the fee structure become retroactive for these organizations?
No, no. There's no retroactive piece for the facilities, for, for use of facilities. This is for new applications going forward. However, I think part of the reason we got to these conversations is that there was some inconsistency around who had them for free and who had them for cost. And so this is, would be effective with board's action and, and support of this regulation and going forward, new applications would fall under-
Okay.
Under these.
So say you have an organization that, under the old application, you, you re-sign these applications every year, but if they-
They have to reapply annually.
Right, they have to reapply.
Or every six months if it's long-term.
So if they have already reapplied?
Prior to board action, theirs is in place.
For this year.
They're through the term of their-
Arrangement.
Application, not through the year, through the term of their application.
Gotcha.
Once that application is, has expired, the, the permit has expired, I should say, through the time of their permit, then they would fall under the new regulations.
So for those organizations that would indeed be looking at new fees for this coming year, would there be any consideration to allowing them to gradually move into this as, not expecting that there would be some fees involved?
I think-
We're just trying to save these organizations.
Can I speak to my partner on the policy committee?
Absolutely.
We did not recommend that.
Oh, I know that we didn't.
But I, but I will just-
I understand that there's a consistent, that they're inconsistent application of fees revision, right? So I understand that, and we didn't recommend that.
Are you trying to break your own policy already?
But the other, the other piece I do think is important, that we don't confuse the fee schedule with the policy. So if you, if you look at the policy, you know, there's still, you know, two or three different policies associated with this. So for example, we got the question about PTAs. So there's a K, kappa, G, gamma, Z, zulo, C, community policy, KGZC. And so the policy still applies that, in terms of the process, looking at school-related organizations, youth organizations, adult athletic teams, notes in there that regular meetings of no operational costs, it mentions PTA. So that policy is still there. The, the fee structure is what gets applied as they implement that, that policy. But it's nothing that we recommended to the board as of now to-
Listen, I, I know that we need to have a consistent fee policy. I just want to be sure that the organizations that have not had to look at the costs, I'm concerned for them.
But to your credit, that was, it was part of your recommendation that we put this out there for a comment for 60 days, and that was trying to make sure-
That was what I was concerned about.
That folks were informed and if they had any concerns, that they could, you know, express it.
Well, hopefully, we won't see too many organizations that would be disenfranchised as a result of our necessary policy.
No matter, no matter what we do, there's always going to be some concern, and we'll, we'll always try to make it best for the whole, so. Dr. Robinson?
My question is going back to the parking lot fee. If somebody rents out the Ramby High School auditorium, will they be charging the additional $10?
No.
Okay.
No. This is, the, the parking lot fee is for entities that want to use the parking lot solely.
Okay, that's, that just-
Yeah, no, parking, parking goes with the building rental.
That's what I thought, that's, and I, and I would just want for clarification.
Dr. Gabriel?
Can we attach those associated policies to our, our presentation here, so we can actually go back and, and look at those? You know, personally, I, I would like to go back and look at those.
Yeah, if you, we can attach them, but also if you, under the Policies tab on Board Docs-
Uh huh.
There's a-
They're under there.
There's a case section in School Community Relations. And if you look under KG, you'll see the KGZC, you'll see the, the policies associated with that. KGZC, KGZB, KGZA.
That's under the policy meeting?
No, it's under the Policy tab on Board Docs. It's a Policies tab.
Okay. And then my other question was, we, we did have a specific question about the use of classrooms, and I know that we have a fee on here for that. If, is it going to be up to the principal as to whether or not a classroom will be used?
Yeah. A principal has to be able to say whether or not there's a conflict with an existing event on that date. The schools have the first right of dates and use of the facility. Following that, if the dates are available, then you can see what spaces are they asking for, and, and is that a possibility? I'll give you an example, there was a, a community conference for youth at Coleman Place this spring, and so- community conference for youth at Coleman Place this spring. And so, there were some breakout sessions. If an entity is asking for breakout sessions, the principal will usually work with the requester to figure out what the space needs are, and to determine what could be available to them, and which classroom.
Right. Because the, the, the comment was about personal items that were in the classroom-
That's correct. And that's why-
You know, what you found.
And, and that's why principals usually talk about, you know, are there other places that we can create breakout opportunities, rather than the physical classroom? When, it, it has been my experience that when principals do have events that would include classroom use, staff are notified in advance that the classrooms would be used for something.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on facilities? So, also, those will be on the consent agenda today. And even as you look at the Use of Facilities document that's on today's docket, you can even see there where there's some, some paid, some not paid. So, we'll, we'll get there, and it's a living document, so we can always revisit it. Next on your, what's that? Oh, just call me. Oh, yeah.
Just call you, your phone number.
I kind of get that already. Two point oh-three, School Board Advisory Committee's Appointment Review. I just, I apologize, because I just noted that the appointments aren't there. But two, two, two advisory committees we wanted to touch on today. One is the SEAC. We had received the applications for SEAC members. I think everybody got a copy of those, forwarded. Based upon the current composition of the Special Education Advisory Committee and the number of applications that we received, we feel like we're in a good position where we can accept all of the applications that we received for, for the Special Education Advisory Committee. So, the recommendation would be that the board accept all of the applications that we've received for the Special Education Advisory Committee, knowing that there's still going to be some vacancies available that we can complete moving forward. Dr. Boone had a, had recommendations for the Student Health Advisory Committee.
Those were submitted, aren't they posted?
Yeah. We don't, we don't have those posted. So, what's the will of the board? You want to come back and talk about those at the end, or-
Are they on the, the-
You want to do them at the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right. So, you want to do, you want to do them all at the next meeting then? Or you want to go ahead and do the-
Do them all.
Do them all at the next meeting, under Board Matters, at the, at the work session?
On the fourteenth meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, work session.
Well, the next work session is the fourteenth. We don't have another meeting between now and the, and the start of school.
Because of the Labor, because of Labor Day.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is the question before us whether or not we look at the applicants for-
You already have, you, you have the applicants.
Right.
So, for, for the special education, we know we have, we can fill all of those.
Yeah, we're going to fill all of those.
For the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, what I'm waiting to get back from them is their current roster to compare with the, the applications that we received, so we can fill those in.
You didn't get that yet.
Right. The Student Health comes from the, the superintendent.
And provide.
And so, we need to get that to you.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
CTE.
And the CTE, actually going back and looking at the policy, also needs to be a combination of the superintendent and from the current CTE Advisory Committee. So, those were the two that I was expecting that we would do in September, the CTE and the Gifted. But in the realization that you don't have the Student Health one either, I would just recommend, let's just do them all on the, on the fourteenth. And then, we'll just get those out to you this week.
For the sake of the fidelity of the process.
Wait, was, Dr. Gabriel?
I mean, if we know the names for the Student Health Advisory Committee, and it's just a matter of putting them on Board Docs, and since Dr. Boone is the one to nominate them, I think that if we can let those folks know soon rather than later, I don't-
Yeah. We're going to have to notify everybody once we, once we appoint them. I mean, again, we could, we could come back at the end and do both. But I think there's some desire on behalf of the, the board to know who they are and, and be able to give some feedback if, if so desired.
Yeah.
So.
I think for the fidelity of the process, we should wait until the fourteenth and review all as appropriate. And at that point, you'll have your CTE-
Absolutely.
And your Gifted as well, and we can do all.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Schools only give you a session one week.
Yep.
Like we're waiting till the middle of November.
And you'll have the Student Health tonight. I mean, you'll have it before, you'll have the, the, the individuals. It's really the CTE and the GEAC are the two that, where we have more applicants than slots.
Oh, okay. So-
I think that's right.
Are, are the folks with regard, because we know the names of the Student Health Advisory Committee, because Dr. Boone has them, are they going to be notified?
Nobody gets notified till we act.
Okay. So, so we-
After the fourteenth.
And for us to act, are you saying that she's going to submit those names to us, and then we will act on them on the fourteenth?
Superintendent makes the recommendation, we accept them, and individuals get notified that they have been-
So, they will be notified. Clerk is responsible, then notifying both the existing board, the existing Advisory Committee and its chairperson, along with the people who have been, the easiest way is to copy the current chair and, of the Advisory Committee, and then send a letter to each person at the board meeting of whatever you were approved to serve on X committee.
So, the notification process would take place after we take a vote on the fourteenth?
That's correct.
But to clarify, I believe you, acknowledgement letters have all gone out to all applicants.
Not to all, no.
Oh, okay.
Because I thought we were going to be done with this today. So-
I mean, not, not approval, but acknowledgement that we have received.
Right. We can do that in this interim.
Yeah. Okay.
You guys want to say, say it?
Listen, we can, we can't put the, the names on the consent agenda for the Student Health Advisory.
No, because the board wouldn't have that chance to see who they are.
But our input doesn't matter. It's Dr. Boone's decision.
It's simply a recommendation. I propose you dispose.
If it's the will of the board to wait until the fourteenth, that's fine. I just know that folks have, and I understand the position with the GEAC and the SEAC, and the CTE. I just am ready for this process to get rolling, and the community members to be notified so that they can form their committees and they can start on the work.
Are all of those committees ready?
For all of them, yeah.
Right.
So, okay.
All right. Having said that, closed session. Now, a motion for us to enter into closed executive session.
Can we take a break first?
We can take a break after we-
Okay.
Do the motion.
The move that we go into closed session.
I second that we move into closed session.
Ms. Banks.
Thank you. It is the moved and seconded that the members of the School Board, Superintendent, and Council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for the discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters concerning specific students in Norfolk Public Schools is authorized by executive session by Section two point two dash three seven one one two, including a single student disciplinary hearing in the People Personnel Docket at this date for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools. In consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or the specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by counsel. Ms. Bessin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
All right. Now, we have a student appeal. Are they here?
Yes, they're here.
Okay. So, we're, yeah. So, can we do five minutes and then do the student appeal first? Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to our School Board Business Meeting tonight. I'd like to proceed with opening up our meeting, and Reverend Haywood, I believe you have the honors.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we head into our Superintendent's Report, I'd like to welcome Torian Espri to our School Board, our School Board, Student Rep. And I know he came straight from practice, right?
Yes, sir, I did.
Yeah. So, we are excited about you being here. We have plenty of work for you. We look forward to you bringing your voice and the voice of students to the table. And it's just, it's just great to have you. And anything you'd just like to say before we go to the Superintendent's Report?
Um, I would just say that it's a very exciting moment for me, as well as the students of Norfolk, for this opportunity. Once again, I would like to thank Dr. Boone for the opportunity. Very excited and looking forward to all the things before me. And I just, this is like Christmas for me, so I just want to get right into it. And I'm excited, and I'm, I'm glad to be here. I thank you.
We promise you, we will not give you coal.
Thank you.
So, with that, we will proceed with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Boone.
Good evening, Chairman Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. It is hard to believe that today is August seventeen, and in just a very few short days, we'll be opening the sixteen-seventeen school year for our teachers. So, I just want to highlight a couple of, of events and where we are as we think about our timelines and readiness for opening schools. Monday, August twenty-second, our new teachers will report, and we have some exciting professional development and, and, and connecting them to the district with their work. August twenty-fourth, our, rest of our teachers and staff will report for two days of district-wide professional development. And then, on the twenty-ninth, we will move into school-based professional development and teachers getting ready to meet their students on September sixth. So, we, we are very close to the opening of schools. We're working and find, bus routes are being finalized, and I believe some have been posted, but bus routes will be posted. Schools are reaching, beginning to reach out to, to students and let them know their class assignments, their schedules, and those pieces. And so, there's so much behind the scene that we're working on. I'm looking forward to the September Business Meeting to do what I have, have established in, in my prior, previous superintendency, is a openings, a school opening report, to kind of talk and share what it takes to open schools. You know, how many lunches and breakfasts will we be serving today? How many miles our buses run? What does the professional development look like over the summer? Major capital projects or improvement projects, maintenance projects at schools? Our hiring process, how many people we've hired, and how many steps we've had to process over the summer to think about our, our, what it takes to, to really open, open a school. We're very excited. We just heard Torian indicate that he came from football practice. We've started football practice, and other fall sports are kicking off. We're excited this fall as we will open two new buildings. And we are finish, putting in, on finishing touches both the things that the contractor is, is needing to do, things that we have to do for MPS, as well as the professional development around the systems in the buildings, and how to use the technology that will be available, and, and all of that great information. In July, we had our Summer Leadership Institute, where principals, assistant principals, and central office administrators gather, where we can focus on what we will do to lead to greater success in Norfolk Public Schools. So, we're, we're on the cusp. And I do this school opening readiness comment, make these comments tonight, because the next time we're together, school will have been open about six days, the next time that we're together. So, we wanted to, to let parents in the community know that we're excited about receiving the children in our district. We're excited about our teachers and, and other staff who will be returning, and for all of those who have returned. There, of course, will be a number of new faces, and some new faces, some people in different seats on the bus, different responsibilities. But we're, I'm excited to be able to have the first full school year with Norfolk Public Schools, as we redesign ourselves for, for greater results and begin to lead forward in this work. I will be doing an all-district message on August twenty-ninth, and we will be using our technology to live, live feed of the message. So, schools will be able to stay where they are and have discussions, and, and others will be in attendance at the actual live feed and have discussions afterwards. So, those who have been accustomed to the event at Scope, we're not having that this year. We're doing something different, and next year hoping to do even more in terms of a school opening event. It's, it's going to be a great year coming forward. We, as I said, we're not finished. You know, if you've ever built a home, and you're trying to move into the home, and they're still doing punch list items, so that's what's happening with our, our two new buildings. The, it'll be exciting. Next year, this time, we'll be talking about opening Larchmont and Ocean View Elementary Schools. So, we're, we're quite busy with all of the work, and we appreciate the support of the School Board, both through its policies and its direction of how we lead forward, and are exciting to see what the next school year will bring for us. So, that's what I wanted to talk about with opening the schools, and we'll ask the public to please be conscious of the fact that the day after Labor Day, our yellow limousines will be on the highways, and all of my babies will be out either waiting to board those yellow limousines or walking to schools. And so, we'll remind you, please think about school opening and safety and traveling. We are able to get places faster when the yellow limousines aren't on the streets. I understand that. But when we, when we get back, it's an exciting time as we begin a new school year. So, do think, think safety as we go forward. The one other item that I have for, in the Superintendent's Report tonight is an observance. And I know it seems funny that we're talking about this, but since this is our business meeting, prior to Art and Education Week, which is September eleventh through seventeenth, I, it's National Arts and Education Week is a celebration recognizing the importance of arts in a well-rounded education. It was designated by Congress in two thousand and ten through House Resolution two seventy-five. The celebration is designed, designated to bring attention to the cause to elective officials and educational decision-makers across the country, and to support equitable access to the arts for all students. So, I have a proclamation that I will read that is being offered by the School Board, and I've asked Dr. Cataldo, as the Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, to receive this particular proclamation. "In recognition of Art and Education Week, whereas the School Board of the City of Norfolk recognizes that arts education, including dance, drama, music, and visual arts, is an essential part of basic education for all students, providing a balanced education that aids in developing full potential, and whereas the arts enrich the lives of children in the City of Norfolk, the Commonwealth, and throughout the country by developing creative ability, self-expression, self-reflection, cognitive skills, discipline, a heightened appreciation of beauty, and cross-cultural understanding. And whereas many national and state professional education associations hold celebrations in the month of September focused on students' participation in the arts. And whereas these celebrations give Norfolk City Public Schools a unique opportunity to focus on the value of the arts for all students, to foster cross-cultural understanding, to recognize the district's outstanding young artists, to focus on careers in the arts available to Virginia students, and to enhance public support for this important part of their curriculum. And whereas the fine arts are a significant component of students' educational development, teaching them the language and production of the arts, and helping them understand the role of arts in civ- teaching them the language and production of the arts and helping them understand the role of arts in civilizations, both past and present. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby proclaim September 11th through 17th, 2016 as Art in Education Week and encourage all citizens to celebrate the arts with meaningful student activities and programs that demonstrate learning and understanding in the visual and performing arts. Signed by Board Chair Rodney Jordan, myself as superintendent and Janelle Banks, Clerk of the Board." He'll come and meet you, meet you right there, Dr. Cataldo.
Right here. I'll say you're going to meet me right here. All right, thank you, Dr. Boone. Any questions for Dr. Boone regarding the superintendent's report? All right, hearing none, we will proceed with our agenda. Next on the agenda is citizen comment on agenda and non-agenda items. I'd like to share with you what our procedures are. When your name is called, if you would please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you're employed by the system. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, you may ask that others rise and be recognized. If you have any written statements or supporting materials, you may present those to Ms. Banks, the clerk, for the record. Speakers are limited to one appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizens' remarks at the time they are given. Ms. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Our first speaker is Ms. Nicole Anthony, followed by Ms. Cheryl Lacy. And we do have five speakers signed up this evening. Thank you.
Good afternoon, excuse me, good evening, everyone. It's been a long day. My name is Dr. Nicole Anthony and I'm the mother of three young men who attend Norfolk Public Schools. Two of my young men are in Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. I am a mother, I'm a special educator slash researcher and a advocate for students with disabilities. Which brings me to the reason why I'm here. I ran into one of my former students in a food line not too far from here. Beautiful young lady, but she had an ankle bracelet on her leg, 15 years old. This was her second time with an ankle bracelet. Now, the ankle bracelet itself didn't shock me because many of my students in my special education class had ankle bracelets. But this one hit me a little differently. So we talked a little while, she went on her way and I stood in the aisle maybe about another five minutes. And I wondered to myself, what is life going to be like for her? And as a researcher, I decided to conduct some research. And I found this article by two economists from Harvard. And in the article, which looks at income mobility for children throughout the United States, it says Norfolk City is extremely bad for income mobility for children in poor families. It is among the worst, the worst in the U.S. Wow. Then I said to myself, well, what did they base these factors on or what did they base this information on? And one of the five factors is education. Your education determines where you live, it determines your income. And if you have a poor education, that's going to determine where you live. But I said, two economists from Harvard, what do they know, right? So I said, let me go to a source. Let me go to the Virginia Department of Education. And I found the Special Education Performance Report. And it says, and this is for the 2013, 2014 school year. Only 38% of children with IEPs graduated with a regular diploma. 38%, that's below the target of at least 56%. And then I found out that only 33%, excuse me, 34% of students with disabilities can actually read on grade level. Which makes sense because I taught fifth graders who read on first grade reading level. And I thought it was some type of anomaly, but it wasn't. Because year after year after year, I had these students in my class. So I say all that to say that we're coming upon a new school year. And we all need to work together to make sure that we end the trajectory or change it for the students with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Chairman Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, cabinet and colleagues. My name is Cheryl Lacy and I'm a veteran NPS teacher. First, I'd like to thank you for our new vision plan. It is comprehensive and inclusive and I appreciated the upgraded plan when I went for my annual eye exam and glasses. What I would like to suggest is even more improvements or additions to our healthcare benefits. I would like to suggest a proactive wellness plan for all NPS employees to potentially including hiring a wellness coordinator. I feel that if we modeled our plan like Chesapeake Public Schools, it would be cost-effective, saving the school system money and helping keep employees healthy. My suggestions include the following: covering the cost of Weight Watchers programs, increasing gym choices to include larger gyms that would provide employees with better gym options closer to home, and a neighborhood pharmacy where prescriptions can be discounted. There are so many advantages to adding this benefit, the first being increased wellness amongst our staff. Second, the healthier we are, the less we require substitutes due to absences. Third, there would be a decrease in insurance usage. And fourth, healthy employees equal happy employees. You've heard me speak before of wanting to keep good teachers in Norfolk and I think this incentive would help. Can't you see it now? The biggest loser comes to Norfolk Public Schools. Let's give them something positive to write about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Carter Mellon, followed by Jenny Bobby.
Hello, my name is Carter Moline. And my daughter's been in the Norfolk Public Schools with an IEP for autism since 2005. Okay, my name is Carter Moline. I'm here to talk about my daughter Olivia Moline. She has an IEP for autism. NPS could not meet her needs last year and it was decided by the IEP team, including parents, to place Olivia in a private day placement. There are seven available private day placement schools in our area, five of which are state licensed for autism. We parents, under the suggestion of Olivia's attending psychiatrist, clinical psychologist and family therapist, decided that the appropriate placement for Olivia would be the Plan B Academy. The Plan B Academy is a Virginia state licensed school run by a board-certified behavior analyst and licensed behavior analyst. To enroll, the child has to have a primary diagnosis of autism. Currently, Plan B has 47 students publicly placed by their home district. One from Stafford, one from Lynchburg, one from Newport News, one from Portsmouth, three from York County, six from Suffolk, 11 from Virginia Beach, 23 from Chesapeake and zero from Norfolk. My questions are, why does the NPS IEP team not provide five of the seven private day placement schools available through the CSA, including four of the five licensed by the VDOE for autism? Why does the Norfolk EdCat team not fund four of the five private day placement schools licensed for autism through the VDOE? Why does the Norfolk NIC not recognize four of the five area private day placement schools VDOE licensed for autism by their omission from the RFP list of approved vendors? Why can NPS place a child outside of the district for autistic behavior and deny state funding for the appropriate school exclusively specialized in treating autistic behaviors? Why does my wife have to pay $8,217.12 in tuition for enrollment in a program strongly recommended by medical team and unavailable to Norfolk residents? All of them who have an IEP? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, board members and Dr. Boone. My name is Jenny Bobby. My husband and I live in Lafayette Wynona and we have a 16-year-old daughter with autism attending Booker T. Washington. My husband is an NPS special education teacher at Northside Middle. Last month, I had the pleasure of serving as a speaker following the Narrow Theater's one-time showing of the controversial new documentary, Vaxxed, from cover-up to catastrophe. This is the same film that last spring was pulled from the Tribeca Film Festival despite festival founder Robert De Niro's pleas that people should see the film. Described as the anti-vaccine or CDC whistleblower film, Vaxxed is a provocative look at the vaccine industry and accusations that CDC researchers knowingly destroyed study data linking vaccines and autism. One of these researchers implicated in this cover-up is Norfolk School Board Member Tanya Bassin. Along with four other researchers, Ms. Bassin is accused of omitting, omitting study data suggesting that African-American male children who received the MMR vaccine before age three were at increased risk of autism. The tampered study data was included in a 2004 article published in the Journal of Pediatrics. Ms. Bassin, you stated when you were appointed to the Norfolk School Board that you have the skill set from a professional background to hopefully provide some insight into developing and then implementing more accountability-driven policies. With that in mind, I'm here tonight to publicly ask Ms. Bassin to clarify her position on this controversy by responding to the following questions. What was your role in the 2004 study that now alleged, that is now alleged by your coworker to be a scientific fraud? Did you witness data being thrown away in a trash can or did you throw away data yourself? Do you support congressional hearings investigating the claims of scientific fraud by the other authors of the 2004 MMR study? Did the group of five authors deviate from the original study protocol in order to cover up undesirable results? As a board member, Ms. Bassin routinely reviews large amounts of data and serves as one of the current members of the school board's Children's Health Committee. This controversy has called into question her professional ethics and integrity. I have shared with Ms. Bassin statistically significant data and information on the poor outcomes of our students with disabilities, as well as issues I have encountered accessing services for my daughter with autism. I am now left wondering if the data I shared with her didn't end up in the trash can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Ms. Summer Wood.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angela Summer Woods. I'm a Norfolk resident. I am the mother of four school-aged children. My children's health, well-being and education are my number one priority. From this school board, I expect a high level of integrity and accountability. I, I like other parents here, have a child on the autism spectrum whose academic needs were woefully and pitifully unmet when she was a Norfolk Public School student. She and her three siblings no longer are enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools because I have the resources to buy them out. So I'm here to speak for other children in my community whose needs are not being met. And equally to ask a school board member, Ms. Bassin, if she is aware that her co-author on the study published in the Journal of Pediatrics in 2004 titled "Age of First Muscles, Mumps and Rubella", the co-author who's named Ms. Bassin is Dr. William Thompson. And as previously stated, I would like to know if Ms. Bassin was aware that that accusation had been made against her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, that concludes our speakers for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us this evening. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion at all needed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Banks, if you're called, roll please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Next up, 6 dot 01 is the 2016, 2017 School Crisis Plans. Dr. Boone?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. There's an annual requirement that the, that school boards review and have visibility of school crisis plans. And you know, these are significant documents that drive how we support our students and staff in the event of emergencies related to the schools. So this evening, I'm going to ask Dr. Lans and I believe Ms. Renee Parker to come and provide an overview of the structures that are required to be included in our annual crisis plans. And so, and then at a point later this fall, we will, the board will be asked to certify that you've had an opportunity to review these plans and, and, and see where we are. It should be noted that these plans are not fully visible to the public because if we let you, let the public know exactly what the plans entail, what our responses are, as well as floor plans and other pieces of information as it relates to these plans, then we're essentially making ourselves extremely vulnerable. So this information is, is available to the board for its review. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lans and Ms. Parker.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, members of the board. As Dr. Boone mentioned, we will provide a brief overview of this state requirement in terms of the annual crisis plans. And we'll provide some information about the documents that the schools submitted. And they do this annually and you'll hear a little bit more information during our brief presentation about how the process works, what the expectations are. Ms. Parker is also going to share some information with you related to some of the general feedback that we get related to the reports and how we use this information in terms of next steps. And so Ms. Parker will begin and share some of those details with you.
Well, what you have before you is the checklist and we do that every year to make sure that every school is compliant to the mandate by the state that each school submits a crisis plan. Of course, this is a federal regulation and we have to do this because we receive federal dollars. It is also state mandated by DCJS. The state requires that these are done and that they are certified by the superintendent and turned into the state that certification by August 31st of each year. Once those plans have been certified and we have the opportunity to review them with some recommendations of changes, once those are made and the schools actually have the opportunity to practice using those plans the first couple of weeks of school, then we send those modified plans to the Norfolk Emergency Management Officials. They then share them as needed with the Chief of Police, Fire Chief and the Director of Emergency Medical Services. And this is so that these first responders can get to our schools and know that when, when a crisis occurs, these schools will utilize these plans. They will utilize the evacuation sites, they will utilize the secondary sites. We'll have our command post set up, we'll have a media staging center set up, parent reunification area. So all of these things are put into the plan so that if something happens, the police know, all our first responders know where we're supposed to be if things go as the plan states. Now, we can't plan for any crisis exactly because we don't know what that crisis is going to be. But this is a plan put in place so that if something happens, we have some structure and some idea of how we, how we will move from place to place. As the security coordinator, I've sat down with my assistant and we have reviewed every single plan. There's a common theme through some of the plans. Whereas our schools open officially for some schools, let's say at nine o'clock. And the school has a joint for some schools, let's say at nine o'clock, and the school has a joint program in the building, such as the YMCA, that is there at six o'clock. Well, we've gone through, and I'm going to ask those schools who have those programs in their school to modify that information on the front of the plan so that if something was to happen in that community, if there needed to be a lockdown or, or anything else, the police wouldn't think, or the first responders would not think that there's nobody in the building because the building doesn't open until nine or eight forty-five. If there are children in there at six in the morning, or children in there until 6:00 PM, I want that identified on the first page of the sheet so that there aren't any questions and we can get help as soon as we need it. The other theme that we saw was the parent reunification sites were located close to the command posts. This would make for some really confusing and very chaotic situations, so we need to make sure, and I need to work with all of our administrators, to make sure that there's enough distance where people can do the things that they need to do and orchestrate things and children can get to their parents in a very safe and orderly manner that won't disrupt the whole scene of what's going on. The third one is, a lot of our schools stated that they have generators, but they didn't say where the backup generators are. So I have to work with them so that we're very crystal clear in letting people know that are coming to help us where things are and what we need so that we can get the necessary help that we need. As a result of these findings and the approval, the state has also made changes to the lockdown drills as well as the fire drills. Last year, they had to have lockdown drills at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. Well, this year, they are requiring that the first twenty days, just like we used to do fire drills the first month, that there are going to be fire drills and lockdown drills done within the first twenty days of school, and then they will be done in the following sessions or semesters of school. So those plans need to cover those things, and we need to make sure everybody knows. And what I've done is, from the state, I have actually requested the drill books that they have from DCJS for 2016-17 that gives a list of all of the drills and the changes and the requirements, and it gives a sample schedule so that administrators can set up that schedule for their schools. The state acknowledges, and so do we, that these plans are working plans. So they expect that even though we certify these by August 31st, if particular things happen, for example, if we have a student that may be injured or a staff member that may be injured and may need some assistance in getting out of a building, that the list that's put inside for people who might need assistance, that those things would be changed. So any modifications that we need, if staff members leave, or if new staff members come on board, if there are things that need to be done to the plan, the state expects that we will modify those plans, and then we will give those modifications to the city so that they are also aware that those plans have been made. I've listed the new codes, and we talked about those and the times that those things have to be done. And like I said, all of this information has been and will continue to be shared with the building administrators. Any questions?
Dr. Boone, you have anything else you'd like to?
No, I want to, I want to thank Dr. Lanz and Ms. Parker for this presentation, and certainly if the board has any specific questions, they stand prepared, and we stand prepared to entertain those.
Dr. Gabriel?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. My question, we've had quite a few of the CSEP classrooms move around over the course of between last year and this year, and we have some new building leaders. Are they aware of the needs of students, particularly those in wheelchairs, in case there is an event that happens in a building and they need to be escorted out of the building? Do they have a list of like the number of kids, and do we take into consideration where those classrooms are so that they're easily accessible to a place where people can get to them and they can get out of the building?
Well, what is required in this plan is that if there have been any changes from last year to this year, that those changes are given as a part of the plan. There are floor plans that are required so that if they've moved classrooms or they've added buildings, anything that we've done that's different from last year, that has to be reported in the plan. There's also a list that they're required to give of those students that need certain accommodations, and those things are given to the city.
Thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Outside of fire drills and lockdown drills, there are other crisis scenarios that could certainly take place in any public setting. Do you do tabletop drilling or other kinds of drills or exercises so that everybody who's in these plans knows their role and they play it out as though it's happening?
We've done, excuse me, certain types of drills and tabletops in the past, but we also ask the building administrators to use, to take their plans and do a walkthrough to see if this is a plan that you can really use. And in doing that, we tell them, if you need any assistance in doing that, please let us know. We'll schedule a time to come out. Norfolk Police Department comes in and works with them, with them in using those plans. Also, the community resource officers work with them in using those plans. So we give them opportunities to work with the plan to see if this is just something we put down on paper as an exercise, or is this a plan that would really work in the event that something occurred? And when they come out, they give different scenarios. And we have some schools that are very proactive in choosing scenarios and working with the local police to make sure that the schools would know what to do in the event that something like that occurred.
Yeah, I think that's great, and I would just encourage more practice with tabletops and real, you know, life outside of the room tabletop, real setting, because you just can't practice enough for any of this. I know, we do it at our workplace. It's just such a good exercise for all of us to become sadly too familiar with, but one that we need to. So I appreciate your efforts, and I just encourage you to exercise, 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 tabletop or scenario drilling.
Anyone else?
Actually, I have a question. Is there any way that there can, you said that the administrators of the schools could reach out for help. How about in a scenario like a science classroom or something where students may need to know the safest way to get out of a very cramped and packed place with such dangerous equipment around?
That, these can be scaled down or up in any way that you need them. It's not just about the entire building. If you need to do a certain area in the school, if you need to do a certain place, then that's what the plan should be able to help with. There should be people assigned to certain parts, to certain responsibilities that know that this is what would be needed in the event that this occurred, that we have explosives over here, that we have chemicals that might, you know, do this, that, and the other. That's what the plan is supposed to be about. And those people that they have listed with the special skills and the different things that's in the plan, that's what the building administrator is supposed to put together and plan for those things.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So just to be clear, so you all are asking us to vote on and approve receipt of these as current, or what, are we doing that later?
No, what we're asking the board to do is to review the plans that you have available, and they'll post it for the boards for, it's the confidential content. And then, if there are any questions or any issues that are raised prior to August 31st, we need to know that, otherwise we can certify that we've updated the board as it relates to the various plans. You have had availability to see those plans, and then I can sign off on the certification that we've met the state requirement on that.
Everyone clear on that, then? All right. So anything else you all like to add or share or maybe note for us as we conduct the review of these plans?
Only that note, when you review the plans, the things that I've brought up as concerns are the things that I will be working with the schools to modify.
And from a response time, so if you have to submit them by August 31st, is that correct? Is there a date that you'd like to recommend for us to have comments back to you that gives you time to do anything in response?
I was going to say if we have to actually do it by the 31st, if we could get them a week prior, and it would allow us time to review the feedback as well as to get back in touch with you before having to actually submit the information to the state.
So a week from today? If anyone has any feedback or comment, maybe it just eases if we send them to the clerk?
That's fine, yes.
Or would you like them to come back to you, Dr. Boone? What's the preference for any, any feedback that we have?
I think if you send the feedback to me, and that way I can make sure that Dr. Lanz and Ms. Parker receive it.
Okay. So if you all have any feedback, you just send that to, to Dr. Boone, and we will, we will proceed from there. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 6.02 Monthly Financial Report. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Ms. Ingram is, is coming forward as the acting chief financial officer and providing a report. You will recall, last month, we really didn't have a report because we have to go into July to close out our fiscal year. So today, Ms. Ingram has a report for the board.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, and school board members. I'm going to be giving you preliminary, oh, you have before you the preliminary and unaudited financial statements for the end of the fiscal year 2016. And I have noted comments to explain some variances from year to date last year. Do you have any questions about either the operating fund or the child nutrition year-end report for 2016?
Questions? All right. Proceed.
Okay. Next, we will go into the actual financial statement for the first period of this fiscal year, the end of July 31st, 2016. On the revenue side, revenue to date as of July 31st is $23,839,921, or 7.4% of our operating budget, and this compares to 10.5% for the same period last year. And the difference is done mainly due to timing and the receipts of revenues. On the second page for expenditures, it represents that we have spent or encumbered $12.5 million, or 3.9% of the total budget, and this compared to 5.7% for the same time period last year and 5.9% in fiscal year 2015. And there were no budget transfers during the month of July, mainly because we were closing not the fiscal year, and you cannot process budget transfers for that time period. And here again, some major differences were just due to timing and placing orders. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments? Ms. Doyle?
We anticipated a turnover savings amount at the, during our budget season. Did we meet that amount, or did we have more turnover savings than we thought we would at the end of the fiscal year?
We are projected, like I said, we are unaudited, and we're still doing final adjustments, but we are projected to have the two-point million, $2 million savings to carry over to balance the 2017 fiscal year.
Okay. We'll remind the board that that was one of our gap-closing strategies, and one of the strategies that while we needed to do it in order to provide the two-and-a-half percent increase for our staff and, and some other pieces, it still leaves us in the utilization of one-time funds or soft money. And so, when we think about that, as well as the $1 million in audited funds from the previous year that are rolling into this budget, we start FY '18 planning with at least a $3 million deficit. So that was, that's my reminder to the board that we did certain things to ensure that we were able to close the budget and, and use these funds. But again, we don't start at zero for planning for FY '18. We start with at least $3 million in the hole.
Any other questions, comments? Let's, all right, thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion for us to receive the monthly financial reports for June and July 2016 as presented. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we approve the financial reports as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the monthly financial report? Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you called, roll, please.
Thank you. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Last on the agenda item for this, for the agenda for this evening are board reports. Are there any board committee reports or individual board reports that any member would like to make at this time? That I have, so. So just wanted to let the board know that we did have Dr. Boone and I met with city manager Marcus Jones and Mayor Alexander to begin the process of establishing regular meeting times between the leadership team of the school system and, and the city. We also are waiting to hear back from the mayor and the manager for potential first joint meeting. The city council has a retreat coming up in September. They also have a meeting in September, the 13th, but we're just waiting to hear back from them on whether they would like for us to join them at their retreat or another point in time for a meeting in, in September. Also, just want to remind us about a couple of other items. We agreed that we would forego attending the NSBA Cube Conference, but the Great City Schools Conference is coming up in October, so just like for the board to make note of that and be in contact with Ms. Banks about arrangements for that. Also, the VSBA Legislative Conference is coming up in September. Right now, we don't have anyone registered. I'll, I'll be there, but I'd just like to encourage others to also to participate and attend, especially those of you that are on the legislative committee if you can. If not, if others can, try to have representation there. And let's see, what else? Board member, our student board member, Mr. Torian Esperi. Ms. Banks and I did do an initial student orientation, school board member orientation with him last week. I think he, he came to the meeting, so it must not have gone, gone too badly, but it was good. We've already heard the types of questions that we know he's going to bring forward. So he served himself well during the training, and also has already served himself well tonight. We've asked him to look at his schedule, to see about the possibility of being able to attend the CTE Advisory Committee, if he's available to do that, and then also the Norfolk Council of PTAs. Well, we've given him enough breathing room as he is, are you, are you starting?
Starting.
Football?
Uh, yes.
Yes. So he's in the midst of practicing and being involved with football now and other sports later. So we have shared with him something that all of us are still working to learn, and that's not to allow the school board duty to overwhelm the, the rest of your, your life, and, and just reminded him that his academics always come first.
Yes, sir.
So we did do that training as well last week. So I just wanted to put those items before the board, and if there's anything else that any other member has. Dr. Gabriel?
Sure. I just wanted to applaud the administration, all of our teachers and principals, on the good news that we heard earlier today about the overall accreditation status of our public schools, we're moving in the right direction. I think that's where we all want to be. I know we have a long ways to go, but I think that the discussion that we had earlier with Dr. Boone about focusing on the learning that's taking place is going to serve the division well as we move forward in opening up the buildings in September. Lastly, unsolicited comments from the community. I know sometimes we hear items that are concerning, but I heard two really positive comments recently, one about a, a parent who is at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, talking about the quality teachers that her children had and how they're looking forward to attending school next year. And then, secondly, I heard a great comment about Dr. Birdsong and her outreach with our military-connected students and how there was a relationship that had not been in place before that is now in place, and this particular person was very excited about the possibilities for. for our students. I like to share these things with folks because we do hear a lot of good feedback, and I think it should be out there, and I'm sure all of us hear feedback from the community.
Yeah. Just in, in closing on, you reminded me of one other item, just want to also remind the board that we have a work session on September 14th, and the primary focus of that web, work session is the continuing review of the academic data, really going deep at a school level, as well as disaggregating the data around all students. So I just want to, I think there may have been some confusion whether or not everybody had that on the calendar, but I'll make sure that everyone is aware September 14th, we'll be having that work session, and academics will be the, the focus of that, of that meeting.
It's not our usual.
Yes, and we, right, we moved it because of the, giving the Dr. Boone and administration and staff a, a break the first week of school, but we, as always, encourage everyone to, to be out there and just be supportive of all the new parents and students and others who are going to be engaging in our system on the first day. Dr. Boone, did you have any remaining comments?
No. Just again, to thank the board and all of the central office administrators, the building principals and, and assistant principals and all of the staff who've spent a lot of time in professional development and, and to our custodians as we phase out custodial management services and bring it in-house, the spirit in which they are approaching this work, and just really excited about where everybody is to make sure that we have a great school opening. So thanks to everyone.
All right. We will consider our meeting adjourned.